Good morning and welcome to the New York State Senate's September 17th, 2020 public hearing that seeks to further examine housing discrimination on Long Island, an effort prompted by Newsday's 2019 expose. The Committee on Investigations and Government Operations joins the Committee on Housing, Construction, and Community Development chaired by Senator Brian Kavanaugh, as well as the Committee on Consumer Protection chaired by Senator Kevin Thomas as hosts for today's hearing. Before I turn it over to my colleagues for opening remarks, I'd like to first take a moment to bring the public up to speed, as well as outline the ground rules for today. This is our second such hearing, the first of which was held shortly after Newsday's Long Island Divided investigative report was published. The desire for a second hearing was necessitated by the fact that 67 of 68 realtors and industry representatives whose presence was requested refused to appear at our prior hearing, depriving our committees of substantial testimony. Subsequently, we in the state senate issued dozens of subpoenas to compel today's testimony. While previous senate majorities have typically refused legislative subpoenas, our committees, with the support of Majority Leader Andrea Stewart-Cousins, felt the issue at hand was and is of such fundamental importance that it required witness appearance and accountability. After Chairman and Ranking Member opening remarks, I'll introduce the first panel of witnesses and administer an oath. Each witness will be afforded up to five minutes for their statement. During questions, chairs and rankers will be provided five minutes, while members of each committee will be provided three minutes. Chairs and rankers will be afforded a second round of questions if needed, though I respectfully request that these opportunities be judicious. I would like to remind all witnesses participating today that they are subject to Section 21560 of the Criminal Procedure Law entitled Criminal Contempt of the Legislature. Specifically, a person is guilty of criminal contempt of the legislature when, having been fully and duly subpoenaed to attend as a witness before either house of the legislature or before any committee thereof, he or she, one, fails or refuses to attend without lawful excuse, or, two, refuses to be sworn, or, three, refuses to answer any material and proper question, or, four, refuses after reasonable notice to produce books, papers, or documents in his or her possession or under his or her control which constitute material and proper evidence. Criminal contempt of the legislature is a Class A misdemeanor punishable by fines and jail time. To that end, there are a small handful of subpoenaed individuals that, as of this morning, have not committed to participation. Any absences will be duly noted for the record, and we will move to compel testimony, which may include referring them to be held in criminal contempt. All participating witnesses are entitled to request a sidebar with their attorneys if they are remote from one another. Upon doing so, the hearing, including the clock, will be paused until the witness returns. While discrimination is intolerable at any moment or time, today's hearing occurs amidst a backdrop of racial upheaval and reckoning in this country. It is incumbent upon all of us, more so than ever, to get the full facts of what happened here on Long Island so that we may begin to address the inequities and outright bias, whether explicit or implicit, that exists within real estate. I look forward to today's testimony, and I'll now turn it over to Senator Brian Kavanaugh for opening remarks.
Thank you, Senator Scoofus. Thank you, Senator Thomas, also, who's co-chairing this hearing, and we'll hear from him in a moment. And, you know, I'm really honored to be here today with my two co-chairs and all of our colleagues who are here, who I think Senator Scoofus will introduce in a moment, as we begin to shed some light on some very disturbing incidents uncovered by Newsday investigation last year, and consider steps that we can take to prevent discrimination in our state going forward. I also want to acknowledge the extraordinary leadership of our Majority Leader Andrea Stewart-Cousins on this issue and so many others, and the staff of all three committees, and the offices of the chairs, including my own, for all of their work in advance of this hearing. We're not doing this work in a vacuum. I think we should acknowledge that the Division of Human Rights has been working to investigate and obtain some settlements on matters related to today's hearing, as has the Attorney General, and the Attorney General has also recently funded some additional fair housing testing in the state, which was announced a couple of months ago. I also want to acknowledge that Commissioner Ruth Ann Visnauskas at the State Homes and Community Renewal has been working on a survey about, you know, various ways people can participate in promoting affirmatively furthering fair housing around the state. There's a deadline for commenting on that that is tomorrow, so, you know, hopefully that will bear some fruit as well. I also just want to, it should be acknowledged, the extraordinary work of Newsday in their investigative reporting that entered our hearing last December and continues to be the basis for a lot of the questions we're going to be asking today. It really is a remarkable piece of journalism. So today is about connecting the dots. We have seen instances, again, in all of that reporting, of behavior that seems quite disturbing. We've also, in recent months, had the opportunity to see the disproportionate effect of a global pandemic in our communities across the state, how certain communities were hurt far worse than others, and those communities tended to be communities of color. And, of course, we've also had a major new awareness and lots of protests and lots of soul-searching about systemic racism in our policing and in other areas of our society. It is important to note that those things, again, do not happen in a vacuum, that our country suffered many years from overt discrimination in our housing markets that has laid out the geography of our cities and our state, and really the entire country, such that people are segregated. And fair housing laws are intended to be at least one step toward addressing that and ensuring that when someone is looking for a home, as people were in this investigation, or when people are looking for rental housing, that they are not overtly discriminated against. And of course, there are additional steps we can take to proactively further fair housing as well, in addition to avoiding discrimination. But today, of course, is going to be mostly about those discriminatory behaviors that we appeared to witness on the video and in the other materials gathered by Newsday. We do have several pieces of legislation. We are going to have two panels of experts on fair housing testify today about what the investigation uncovered and also the various pieces of legislation. We do have, and these were mentioned in the hearing notice, but we have Senate Bill 6874, sponsored by Senator Goran, which was passed and signed into law already, and that'll bring new sanctions against real estate brokers and salespeople who commit housing discrimination. We've got Senate Bill 6713, sponsored by Senator Hoileman, which notifies housing assistance recipients of their fair housing rights. We've got Senate Bill 7625, sponsored by Senator Kaplan, who I think will be joining us today, which creates a fair housing testing program much like the one that Newsday used to uncover all of this extraordinary material. We've got Senate Bill 8096, which I sponsor, which would establish an obligation to affirmatively further fair housing on the part of all kinds of recipients of housing assistance in our state, government entities and others. And we've got a bill by Senator Scoofus, S. 7581, which would require additional training for real estate professionals and real estate salespeople. And finally, by my other co-chair, Senator Thomas, S. 7632, which would increase the penalties for fair housing violations aimed at preventing such discrimination promoting fair housing in the future. So again, I think we have an opportunity, beginning with our last hearing and continuing today, to usher in a new era of accountability and transparency in all participants in our housing industry, and hopefully this will serve as a blueprint for others who are continuing to battle the scourge of discrimination in our society. I look forward to the opportunity today to dig in deeper to the allegations of discrimination Newsday uncovered, and to use what we learned today to advance our fair housing agenda. Thank you very much.
Thank you to my other co-chair, Senator Kevin Thomas.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. I am Senator Kevin Thomas, the Chairman of the Committee on Consumer Protection of the Senate. Today, we convene for the second time on this very important issue after sending out subpoenas. It is unfortunate that we were forced to even use this tool to get these witnesses here, but I thank those that are here because we need to gather the facts. To those that have intentionally ignored our subpoenas, this legislative body will prepare to seek criminal contempt. And to those who are listening, who have ignored the subpoenas, do the right thing. The issue here is housing discrimination on Long Island. Newsday did an incredible investigation on how potential homebuyers were treated differently on the basis of their skin color. As a homeowner myself, I look for a place that's safe, in a good community, where I can get to work and my kid has a good school, with room for my family to grow. And everyone should have the opportunity to build wealth for their family by owning a home. I live in Levittown. Now, but decades ago, this wouldn't have been possible. The Fair Housing Act changed all of that, or it seemed that way. The Newsday investigation showed us that discriminatory practices were still occurring. They found the following during pair testing. In 40% of the tests, evidence suggested that real estate agents treated minority testers differently than white testers. Specifically, black testers experienced disparate treatment 49% of the time, Hispanics 39% of the time, and Asians 19% of the time. In 24% of the tests, real estate agents steered whites and minorities into deferring communities. Real estate agents used school districts perceived quality when recommending places that homebuyers should consider or avoid. In 8% of the tests, real estate agents denied equal services to minorities. Though the agents did not flat-out refuse service, they did impose conditions on minority testers that seemed reasonable, like obtaining a pre-qualification for a mortgage loan before giving them any listings or showing them any homes. However, these conditions were not imposed on the paired white testers. Enough is enough. Today, we will hear from these agents caught on camera and how their actions contributed to the inequities built into our housing system for generations. It's about time someone actually does something to fix it instead of making it worse. So here we are with my colleagues in the Senate, and I want to thank our leader Andrea Stewart-Cousins for leading the way on this matter, as well as my co-chairs. And we are doing this because our constituents are tired of the lack of action, the lack of accountability. Today, we change all that.
Thank you. I want to acknowledge we've been joined by the Ranking Member of Investigations and Government Operations, Senator Tom O'Mara. Do you have any opening remarks? Okay, hearing none. I'll now just acknowledge those senators who have joined us before we get to the first panel, and the order is based on where you are in my Zoom boxes. I'm just going to be reading across the screen. Senator O'Mara, do you have anything you'd like to say? Opening remarks?
No, thank you very much. I'm good. Sorry, I was on mute.
No worries. Good to see you. So also joining us are Senator Boyle, Senator Liz Kruger, Senator Jim Goran, Senator Todd Kaminsky, Senator Anna Kaplan, and Senator Monica Martinez. With that, we'll introduce and call our first panel, which is made up of folks from Douglas Ellman, and we're joined by Anne Conroy, Lisa Casabona, Francia Perez, Donna Rogers, and Judy Ross. If you can all turn on your videos, please.
I don't know why the video's not working.
Lisa Casabana is joining by phone. Any senators wishing to direct questions, should I name her so that we can be sure she is unmuted?
Okay. Very good. And before we get started, if you can all raise your right hand for me, please, and answer, "Do you solemnly swear that you will tell the truth and nothing but the truth? So help you God?"
I do.
Thank you. Anne, are you going to share any remarks to start?
Yes, I would like to read a prepared statement.
Okay, please keep it under five minutes, please.
Okay. As you know, my name is Anne Conroy. I am the Chief Executive Officer of the Long Island Division of Douglas Ellman. I have worked in real estate on Long Island for over 35 years, and was promoted to Chief Executive Officer of the Long Island Division for Douglas Ellman in January 2020, after serving as President of the region for over 10 years. I appreciate the opportunity to speak on Douglas Ellman's behalf at this hearing. Douglas Ellman would like to thank the New York State Senate for taking the time to address the issue of fair housing and discrimination on Long Island. I'm appearing today with Jessica Rosenberg of Castewitz Benson Torres, LLP, who is outside counsel for the company. Douglas Ellman has a culture built on inclusion and diversity, and has a zero-tolerance policy towards unfair and illegal treatment of any individual or any group. The company strenuously opposes discrimination in all forms and provides extensive training to its agents on proper conduct and compliance with all fair housing laws. Specifically, Douglas Ellman strictly requires that its agents comply with the Federal Fair Housing Act and applicable state, county, and local laws. Under the company's written policy, Douglas Ellman and its agents are prohibited from discriminating or assisting in discrimination based on any protected class, including race and ethnicity. We have provided our policies to the New York State Senate in connection with this hearing. A policy which every agent receives and must adhere to is titled Compliance with Fair Housing and Discrimination Laws, New York State, and related legislation regulations. It states that Douglas Ellman and its agents must comply with all fair housing laws, specifically the policy states. DE and its agents are obliged to comply with the Federal Fair Housing Act, Federal Americans with Disabilities Act, New York State Human Rights Law, applicable county and local laws, and related legislation regulations. These laws require both DE and its agents not to discriminate or assist in discrimination as against landlords and owners, as well as against potential renters and owners based on any protected class. The policy governs all aspects of operations and prohibits a range of activities, including but not limited to discriminatory or unlawful advertisements, both orally and in writing, which indicate a preference or for or exclusion of certain protected classes, refusing to sell or rent housing based on protected classes, misrepresenting the unavailability of housing, setting different terms, privileges, and conditions for potential renters or owners based on protected classes. Douglas Ellman's policy further requires that all agents on Long Island acting as a rental agent must be certified under Douglas Ellman's Rental Broker Certification Program, which mandates that such agents complete a six-hour rental law training class, including education on fair housing, and pass a written test of their knowledge of fair housing and rental law. Douglas Ellman's policy also requires all Douglas Ellman agents to attend an annual three-hour compliance training session, during which agents are trained on compliance with the Fair Housing Act and its obligations and requirements. In light of the pandemic, this training is now conducted each month via Zoom. The monthly training is now taught by Douglas Ellman Senior Vice President of Learning and Career Development. The training also discusses in detail the regulations announced by Governor Cuomo in December of 2019, which were approved by the New York State Real Estate Board and which went into effect in June 2020. The training is comprehensive, where they focus on how the agents must comply in all respects with the new regulations and all fair housing laws, so as to engage in proper professional conduct at all times. For example, the training teaches that a new written fair housing and anti-discrimination disclosure now must be provided upon first substitute contact to a prospective purchaser, tenant, seller, or landlord, and that the form must be maintained by the real estate broker for a period of three years. The training also teaches that a new fair housing and anti-discrimination notice must be displayed in the window of each office and branch office operated by a real estate broker, and be prominently displayed on all websites operated by all real estate licensees and at each open house. With respect to the article that appeared in Newsday on November 17, 2019, I can confirm we have spoken to all the agents referenced in the article who are currently affiliated with Douglas Ellman, and in the wake of the article, we have reiterated to all agents affiliated with Douglas Ellman the importance of fair housing and anti-discrimination protocols. We appreciate and support the New York State Senate's effort to address and eradicate illegal and unequal treatment of homebuyers, and we're prepared to work with the state senate in its efforts to ensure that real estate agents do not engage in any unlawful discriminatory conduct.
Thank you very much. Are any of the other panelists going to make remarks before questions, or Ms. Conroy, were you speaking for them as well?
I believe some of the other agents have a prepared statement as well.
Okay. You want to just raise your hands if you're one of those with a prepared statement? Okay, okay. So why don't we start? Donna, please. Just unmute yourself as well.
I'm sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yep, yep. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Donna Rogers. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today to help in your efforts in preventing and halting discrimination of racial minorities in Long Island. I'm a real estate agent affiliated with Douglas Ellman located at its Plainview office in Long Island. The reason I am here is that I was one of the agents that Newsday accused of steering and disparate treatment of racial minorities in November of 2019, an article based on a paired test that occurred months apart in May and October of 2016. Although I appreciate what Newsday was trying to do for exposing the continued discrimination of racial minorities, I categorically and unequivocally deny engaging in steering, disparate treatment, or discrimination of the minority tester. I was extremely disappointed to see that my test was featured in this article, and that Newsday reached such an erroneous conclusion from a single test administered months apart, especially since Newsday's article does not identify any statement from me that mentions or even alludes to the tester's races or ethnicities. My actions had absolutely nothing to do with race. I was influenced by each tester's stated preferences and abilities with respect to home improvements, and the inventory in Plainview was different at the time of each test. Newsday's article also mentions that I made different statements about school districts to each tester. This is because in between respective tests, I attended trainings during which I learned that speaking about the quality of schools, school districts, could be deemed as steering, and was advised to refrain from speaking about the equality of school districts. It sickens me that my name was associated with this article, and my actions were so grossly misconstrued and misinterpreted. I agree wholeheartedly and support your efforts to combat racial discrimination, and I would welcome and abide by any measures that you implement. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll next go to Francia Perez. You just muted yourself. There you go.
Good morning. My name is Francia Perez, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today to help you, to help your efforts in preventing halting discrimination of racial minorities in Long Island. The reason I am here, that I was one of the agents that Newsday accused of steering and disparate treatment of racial minorities in the November 2019 article based on paired tests that occurred months after, months apart in May and September of 2016. At the time of the tests, I was affiliated with Remax Central Properties. I left Remax Central Properties to join Douglas Ellman in 2017, and I worked in the Douglas Ellman Massapequa office in Long Island. Although I applaud Newsday for exposing the continued discrimination of racial minorities, I categorically and unevocally deny engaging in steering, desperate treatment, or discrimination of the minority tester. I was extremely disappointed to see that my test was featured in the article, and that Newsday reached such an enormous conclusion from a single test administered months apart, especially since Newsday's article does not identify any statement from me that mentions or even alludes to the tester's races or ethnicities. My actions had absolutely nothing to do with race. I was influenced by each tester's respective statements to me about his ability to obtain a preapproval, which is not protected characteristics under the fair housing laws. I absolutely did not discriminate against the minority tester. And it sickens me also, and my name was associated with the article, and that my actions were so grossly misconstrued and misinterpreted. I agree wholeheartedly with and support your efforts to combat racial discrimination, and I would welcome and abide by measures that you might implement. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now go to Judy Ross.
Good morning. My name is Judy Ross, and I appreciate the opportunity as well to speak with you today and help your efforts in preventing and halting discrimination of minority communities and all minorities in Long Island. The reason I am here today is I am also one of the agents that Newsday accused of steering and disparate treatment of racial minorities in their November 2019 article based on a paired test that occurred in April of 2017. At the time of those tests, I was affiliated with Keller Williams Realty Elite. I left Keller Williams Realty Elite to join Douglas Ellman in January of 2018, and I presently work Douglas Ellman's Massapequa Park location. Although I too applaud Newsday for exposing the continued discrimination of racial minorities, I too categorically and unequivocally deny engaging in steering, disparate treatment, or discrimination of the minority tester. I was extremely disappointed to see that my test was featured in the article, and that Newsday reached such an erroneous conclusion from a single test, especially since it's, the article does not identify any statement from me that mentions or even alludes to the tester's race or ethnicities. My action had absolutely nothing to do with race. I simply did my best to respond to the stated preferences and requests of each tester, including with respect to home renovations. I regret making the statement quoted in Newsday's article about school districts to the white tester, but I was only speaking about the school's district's ratings, and I never intended to steer either tester away from or to any town or school district based on its racial composition. I absolutely did not discriminate against the minority tester, and it sickens me that my name was associated with this article, and that my actions were so grossly misconstrued... And it sickens me that my name was associated with this article and that my actions were so grossly misconstrued and misinterpreted. And I do agree wholeheartedly with and I support your efforts to combat racial discrimination. And I would welcome and abide by any measures that you implement. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have one witness by phone, as was mentioned before, Lisa Casabona. I don't know, since obviously we can't see if you raised your hand. Do you have a prepared statement? If you can unmute yourself? Okay, hearing none, I guess we'll just jump to questions then. But I first want to acknowledge we've also been joined by Senator Leroy Comrie. So I'll kick it off and if I may start with Ms. Conroy. Was there any internal investigation? Was there any disciplinary procedures that followed Newsday's expose? It sounded like a couple of the panelists here were actually hired by you subsequent to the Newsday expose. And I guess my question is, you know, was there really a look in the mirror following what was revealed and was there any accountability?
Well, obviously it was very disturbing because we take such a strong position and we train endlessly. Every month there's a training program. Agents are required once a year, obviously, to take it. We have a actual six hour class. It's two parts that after each part, after three hours, they have to take a test. So obviously it was very disturbing that any one of our agents will be included in this.
Was anyone fired?
Nobody was fired because we looked into everything. We spoke to the agents. We spoke to, we had our attorneys look into it to make sure, because I'm a layman, I'm not an attorney, to make sure that there was no act of discrimination. And we
So every accusation or alleged instance that was brought to your attention by Newsday within your firm, you believe was not credible?
Well, I, we sat with every agent. We reviewed everything with every agent, including the videos, and we felt that they did not discriminate. Yes, that is true. So I don't like to use not credible. Obviously, the testers obviously thought that they were not being properly treated. So obviously we wanted to make sure that when we spoke to the agents that they understood the law and they did, and that they had no intent. And so we were very comfortable and we had our attorneys look into it because they come from a different perspective and we wanted to make sure that the law is upheld. We pride ourselves on diversity at Douglas Elliman. I mean, that's actually something we embrace everybody. And I think that any top leading real estate company has to embrace every community and every person so that they could thrive in our society. So it was very disturbing, but we did look into it and we were comfortable after we looked into it and after we spoke to them individually that they did not discriminate.
Okay, if I may turn to Ms. Ross. Do you, what is your sense? Do you feel that steering is commonplace in the industry on Long Island? If you can characterize it, how, you know, is it rare or do you never see it amongst colleagues? I'm not talking about you, I'm talking about generally.
You know, from anybody that I associate with, any of the agents that I have a connection to, I don't see it. But that doesn't mean it's not out there, you know, I have a, I don't, I have a limited group that I, you know, do speak with regarding this and I haven't had issues. You know, I do hear, you know, from something like this that it is out there, but I myself have not really come across it.
I will say, I do appreciate, I think you were the only one we heard from on this panel that expressed some regret or some remorse for some of the comments that you did make to the white tester. If I may, I just sort of probe the situation, your situation that Newsday published. So just as some background, so to the minority tester that approached you, you wrote basically, "Not allowed to say," or you said, "I'm not allowed to say what's a good district or what's not." You can look up the district report card, it'll give you different towns. And, you know, you'll see numbers, percentages, et cetera. And to the white tester, you basically say, you know, you could do the school report card, you can decide. You know, legally I get in trouble if I, and then you go into, you know, there are a few districts that I would not, I won't look in those towns like Baldwin, Amityville. Your attorney, following that, do you recall what your attorney's sort of response to the allegation was?
Well, it was not racially motivated at all. And also, I had been out in the field with the white tester and he, it wasn't like he asked me one time. He kept asking me about school districts, so, you know.
Your attorney, sorry, I know my time is running out here. Your attorney, yes, they didn't, they certainly didn't say it was racially motivated, but your attorney, the rationalization was that the tester wanted to live within 45 minutes of Manhattan and that's the only reason why you didn't show the white tester any houses or you mentioned, "Let's not look in Freeport-Baldwin-Amityville." But you did show them in other communities further than 45 minutes out, in fact, further east on Long Island. So I just, I guess my question is, was your attorney wrong? Has your thoughts on this evolved? What's the real story there? And then I know my time's up, so I'll let you answer and then move on.
No, it was putting all the criteria together. It wasn't just the distance. It was putting the criteria of what worked for that buyer. So that was one of the criteria. But basically it was, he kept asking me about school district quality and that's just what popped into my mind.
Okay, I'll turn it over to Senator Kavanaugh.
Great, thank you Senator Scoofus. So I mean, it's been, a couple of the witnesses noted that their presence here is based on, you know, particular incidents, you know, one incident, a couple of incidents. I would just note, like to note that that's sort of inherent in the way these things work. And the reason we're here today is not because of the three or four incidents that these particular people are involved in, but because of the accumulation of dozens of such incidents over and over again. And so, you know, the witnesses here have, first of all, you have the misfortune, I guess, of being the first panel. So yours is the first behavior we're going to look at today, but we are going to try to view different, you know, view various situations as they came up. So I would like to address some questions to Ms. Perez. During the investigation, you met with an Asian American tester, Mr. Chow, and another tester who was white, Mr. Helling. Both indicated they were looking for homes in the $500,000 price range and presented similar financial information. A brief video clip of the, of some of that interaction.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
If you would, Ms. Francia, we're going to show a video clip now, I think. That's, do we have the clip?
I don't have the video.
Yes, we do.
No, I'm not asking you, sorry, forgive me. The Senate's, I'm talking to the staff who are off screen. Yeah, no, no, we did not expect you to be prepared to play the video for us.
When you get preapproved, you get preapproved for an amount of taxes. That's very important before we do anything. Because if I'm just going to take you, I'll just look, it's a waste of my time and your time because we're not knowing exactly where you stand as a homeowner.
Okay, well, I appreciate.
Oh, you know what, I really, I really do appreciate you coming and this was excellent. I get an idea. And I'm confident that you will get your preapproval and I will find you home.
Okay, so Ms. Perez, is it normally your practice to require preapproval before providing listings and showing homes?
That's what usually is done. I have a conversation with them and that's really what I ask if you have a preapproval. I ask everyone.
And in this case, the Asian American home buyer did not have such a preapproval and nor did the white home buyer. But you did go ahead and show homes to the white home buyer without preapproval. You mentioned that it'd be a waste of time to show listings to the Asian tester without preapproval. What explains the difference there?
Well, I had both of them meet with, at the time, a lender and I asked both of them if they were, you know, you know, wanting to meet with a lender to see if they can get preapproved, if they didn't have one. I did that for both of them, for the white tester and the Asian tester. The white tester was more specific and he did say he had a friend that is in Seattle in the mortgage business and he would be able to supply me with a preapproval within a day or two. And he was more specific as to the area and, you know, just certain things that we do, you know, when they come in. And he was telling me, his wife, you know, was moved to, from, they were moving from Stony Brook to Bethpage, whereas the Asian tester, I said the same thing. I actually, and it's not in that video, I did turn the computer to him to show him because he wanted so many areas and there were so many, I couldn't email him. I turned the computer that's not on the video to show him because I had pulled them up and he said, "No, he wanted all of them emailed." And when I asked him for their preapproval, which is not, you know, there, he said his wife was taking care of that with a friend that was a mortgage broker that was retired. And, you know.
So again, just, but you, at the end of the day, you did show the white home buyer who did not have preapproval, you provided listings, you showed some homes. The Asian tester, you did not do so. Eventually, if I understand correctly, he emailed you that he had preapproval and then even then it took about five weeks before he got any listings. Just, how should we interpret that difference?
I wouldn't, I don't recall that and I would never, never discriminate, especially if they want to buy a home. That's, that's my job. I show homes to everybody. I would never discriminate. I mean, I even sat with both of them, you know, I did my best. I put up, pulled up the, every town that the Asian guy wanted to see because it was a couple of them. As a matter of fact, he had a lease, he said to me, he had a year lease left and that, you know, he didn't know if he would get penalized, but, you know, I still showed him. I didn't not show him because he had a lease and he was moving from the city. I didn't even know if he worked. I still was willing to show it on the computer.
But do you dispute the Newsday investigations conclusions that there was at least five weeks elapsed with the Asian tester and that you did not show him listings or you did not send him listings or show him any homes until he provided you with preapproval?
No, I was willing to show it. I was willing to show him.
Okay, but you didn't show him, is that right?
Because he, he didn't, he didn't come back. And I didn't show Mr. Owens either. I had listings on the table that he took with him and that's not in the video either.
Yeah, I think we're, I think we're talking about Mr. Helling in this case, or at least, I guess there were pseudonyms as well. Okay, I see that my time is up, so I'll yield back to the chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Thomas.
Thank you. I'm going to start with Ms. Ann Conroy. Ms. Conroy, what licenses do you work under?
I'm a broker for the Long Island division of Douglas Elliman.
And as someone who holds a broker's license, what responsibilities do you have to your sales agents?
Well, you know, I run the operations as well as the sales portion. I run everything for Long Island, for the Long Island agents. I have approximately 26 offices, you know, we closed some during COVID and reopened some. So I think it's 26. We have
And how many sales agents work under your broker's license?
Well, it changes from day to day, as you know, but currently, I believe around 1,700 licensees. Some are active, some are inactive, huh?
And do you have a responsibility to supervise these agents?
Absolutely. Supervision of agents is part of our licensing requirement.
And what have you, and what have you done in, let's say, the past week to supervise a sales agent under, working on your license?
I have, I have five senior managers who report directly to me and we have 26 managers who report directly to them, approximately 26 managers. We did have to scale back a little bit during COVID. And all our programs are done by Zoom meetings. They could be done individually or as a group. I have town hall meetings. I have one scheduled in October.
All right, let me ask you a little directly here. The four sales agents that we have on today, do they work under your license?
They work under my license, yes.
And when is the last time that they were supervised while they were at work?
Well, they're supervised every day by the manager who was a broker of the office.
Okay.
Associate broker.
All right, the associate broker is also working under your license, I'm assuming?
Everybody on Long Island who's licensed is working under my broker's license, yes.
When have you, like, directly supervised any of them? Like, have you called them into your office to talk to them about what happened?
I spoke to Francia, I spoke to Donna. I did not speak directly to Judy and I spoke to Lisa Casabona about what happened. I had my managers and my senior managers discuss this with them as well. So this didn't, did not go unhandled. I couldn't possibly speak with 1,700 agents. So that's why I have 26 managers. That's why I have five senior managers who
But here's the thing, here's the thing, right? I find that there is a lack of supervision here. If four of these agents are doing what they do and not seeing that there is something wrong here. Like, for example, you have the sales agent, Ms. Perez, who needed, you know, a preapproval letter from someone from the minority community, but not from the other. I mean, what exactly did your attorneys who cleared them of any violation, like, how do they justify this sales agent not showing one home to another? You know, it baffles me that there is lack of supervision here that you guys are not supervising these sales agents to the point where they don't seem to know right from wrong. And I find that, like, I find that you having a broker's license and overseeing over a thousand sales agents, you're not doing the job that you're supposed to be doing. So I'm very, I'm frustrated by that. I'm frustrated that you don't have that kind of connection to all of them.
Well, you know, when you have a large multi-office company, you put policies in place, you mandate trade.
Here's the thing, right? They're working under your license. When they work under your license, you have a responsibility to make sure that they do the right thing. And I don't see you doing that. That's it.
Respectfully, Senator, I think you should let Ms. Conroy finish her answer. I think you just cut her off. Can she finish what she was answering?
I'm sorry, you're the attorney, right? You should not be answering questions or making any comments during the hearing.
As her attorney, I'm just respectfully asking that she's allowed to answer the full question.
Again, you're not allowed. Yeah, she should answer the question. We'll give her a few additional seconds, but please be clear, Senator Thomas is correct. You know, just at any hearing, the attorneys are not the ones that are providing testimony here. So please, you can communicate to your client, but you are not a participant in this hearing. Please, Ms. Conroy.
So I was trying to say that this is a multi-office company with very strict guidance, very strict written policies. Every manager meets with me once a month. Every manager is, meets with me once a month. COVID has stopped a lot of that from happening during COVID, however, it's twice a month via Zoom. And we go over the law, we go over sales, we go over everything we need to go over. We go over agents and productivity. It's a sales organization. It's a sales organization, and that's very, very important. The rental certification program that I put in place, I put that in place with tests. We're probably the only company that has agents go through a stringent course that they have to pass with a test before they get certified. And if they don't pass, then they can't do rentals for us. So we are very strict with guidance and with responsibility. My managers have to be brokers as they're associate brokers, they have to know the law. My senior managers, associate brokers, they have to know the law. They're in the offices, we're in the offices. But to, to expect individually for any one of us to speak directly to, to the agents is, I think, you know, unreasonable. Now, the managers, every single day, every single day, speak to each and every one of their agents who are licensed to the office, and that occurs.
Ms. Conroy, I, I, I get what you're saying, it's a very big organization, but they're working under your license. That's, that's the issue here. And when someone works under your license, for example, I'm an attorney, I've had, you know, individuals work under my license, but I supervise them. I make sure that they're doing the right thing. I don't think your managers or these meetings that you're having actually did justice here. I mean, if they are coming here to the hearing and still saying they did nothing wrong when we've found things to be actually wrong here. So that's, that's all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. I want to acknowledge we've been joined by Senator Jackson, and next for questions is Senator Kaminsky.
Hi, my, thank you, Chairman Skoufis. My first question's for Ms. Conroy. You know, I think you do make a statement in a way to 1,700 agents when they watch the videos and nothing happens to any of the agents that work under you. So I want to just ask you some specific questions because I found these videos to be highly troubling. I think most Long Islanders who view them find them troubling. And yet I think Douglas Elliman is really trying to do a good job of saying, hey, nothing happened here. If you really look at each situation, there's no problem in, in any individual one, so even though this paints a really bad picture, you have it wrong. And I, I think that's a mistake, and you, you guys are taking the wrong tack. But let me just ask you a specific question, Ms. Conroy. When Judy Ross says to someone, a minority tester, I wouldn't go near them for a specific school district, you're okay with that statement?
Can you, I wouldn't go near them?
Yeah, she said, when talking about certain school districts, she said to a, you know, she says to a white tester about three districts that are predominantly minority school districts, I wouldn't go near them. I wouldn't go near those districts. Like, don't even think about living in those areas. Is that something you're comfortable with?
If that was put in the context of race, it would be terrible. But if it was put in context, I don't know the entire conversation. If somebody had an academic need or something like that, and she told people that that school district wouldn't be beneficial to that student, you know, a lot of stuff is taken out of context. On face value, if you just said, I wouldn't go near them, that sounds terrible. I agree with that. But I don't know the whole conversation, and.
Did you not watch the video?
I did watch the video.
Okay, so in.
But it had nothing to do with race. She did not say that based on race.
Well, it has everything to do with race. She said, when the minority tester comes in, she says, I'm not allowed to tell you what's a good school district or what's not. When the white tester comes in, she goes, I wouldn't even go near them. Don't even think about these schools. That, that didn't give you any pause?
I think it's taken out of context because there was a lot of conversation in between that and leading up to that. And it's very, very hard to take snippets of conversations. When we spoke to her, we were confident that it was not based on race. If it were based on race, I would absolutely agree that that would be not the way to handle the, the customer or the.
And, and what would you need to hear to have you convince something's based on race? She would have to use the actual racial term itself in the sentence?
Well, I don't know if they were talking about standards. You know, the first thing a consumer wants to know about when they look for a home is school district on Long Island. This is, you know, basically, it's families on Long Island. That's the first thing, and we have taught them more recently, in the last year and a half, not to bring up school districts. So because people misconstrue what you're saying, there are certain school districts.
In the two videos of Ms. Perez that we just saw, you didn't see an attitude change in how she addressed one person versus the other?
I did not see any discriminatory intent on her part at all.
I, I, look, I think Douglas Elliman, in my last 10 seconds, Senator Skoufis, I think Douglas Elliman has a real chance to step up, acknowledge a problem and fix it. And instead, you're making a lot of excuses, and this is why we continue to have the problems of discrimination.
It's not, it's not an excuse, Senator. I, we, we have certainly changed our training now to make sure that agents do not discuss school districts because we can see how it can be misconstrued. A minority buyer or seller can feel discriminated against if schools are brought up, so we stopped doing that. But that is one of the things that is driven by the consumer. It is very important to a consumer, regardless of their race, that their children go to a good school, that they could get great education, and that, that is not, that is not different from one parent to another, regardless of race or ethnicity. So.
Thank you.
Since this program, since Newsday, I do have to say, we changed the training to the agents and told them not to bring up schools, that the consumer has to do their research on their own.
Thank you, Ms. Conroy. Thanks, Senator Kaminsky. Next is Senator Goran.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I have a basic question I just like to ask everybody, and, you know, whoever can respond, I may run out of time. Okay, I'll start my video. I just have a basic question I'd like to ask everybody, and to the extent you, you can all answer it, or anyone can. You've all mentioned the word steering, and you've all said that you've not been involved in steering. So my question is, how do you define steering? I'm not asking for a legal technical term, you know, unless you want to give it. Like, what is your opinion of steering? And what is your opinion of the type of activities that would be considered illegal steering? Ms. Perez, Ms. Ross?
I, I could.
I can't.
Ms. Conroy, how are you?
How are you? Steering would be an agent making a decision for a consumer where they should live and showing them properties in that particular neighborhood or community where they feel they should live.
Okay, Ms. Perez?
Steering, I don't even, I can't even explain because I don't, I don't do it, I don't know about it. I try to do my best with everyone.
Have you ever seen anyone else do it?
Not with our, you know, our group. We're, we're trained very well, and we all help each other when we have questions, when we, you know, have a client that needs certain needs or help, we just help each other. We don't steer. We try to make each other better, a better agent.
Ms. Ross, how would you define your opinion of steering?
Steering would be directing a buyer to go to certain areas or towns or whatever, or influencing them according to what you feel is right and not what they would desire.
Okay. Ms. Rogers?
Same thing. I mean, I, I've never actually really experienced anything like that. But yeah, steering and definition would be directing a buyer to a certain area.
Have you ever seen any activity of others that would kind of look like that in all years doing this?
I personally have not, no.
And I think there's one more witness. I just have your first name on my screen, Lisa.
You're muted. If you can unmute yourself, please. Seems we're having trouble with her.
Okay.
We couldn't get a response from her about opening remarks either.
Well, thank you very much, Chairman. Thank you, ladies, for your answers.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to Senator Anna Kaplan.
Thank you, Chairman Skoufis. I want to start by thanking Newsday for their extraordinary work in uncovering this situation and doing the important legwork to expose these awful practices taking place in our community. And I think it's going to take all of us really working to make sure that these don't happen. So my question is for Ms. Conroy. Has your office been in compliance with the new regulations that you talked about that wanted to affect June 20th, requiring notification of fair housing laws?
Yes, it is, it is. It's in compliance.
Okay, and are you confident if in the last few weeks, we had sent secret shoppers to your office, they would have found you to be in compliance and all your members?
Yes, I am confident of that.
Okay. Does your agency use terms like neighborhood specialist, neighborhood experts as a marketing tool to prospective clients? And if so, can you tell me how you decide someone is a specialist in one particular area?
That is not a term that we, it's not a Douglas Elliman term. If an agent uses that in their marketing, that's how they describe themselves. And it's probably because they know the community and have been selling in the community for a long, long time and probably have had good results in terms of listing and selling homes in that community.
Okay, so do you at all look at any of these marketings that your members do? Are they checked?
We have a, we actually have a marketing department that goes through everything. Anytime an agent puts an ad in the paper in terms of a visual, and usually it's the local papers, and we don't really do classified ads anymore, those, all those ads are screened first as to brand as well as content. And the, we work with all the local publications, and we have a list of things that are allowed to be said and not allowed to be said. And unless an agent goes to a publication we're not aware of, then I would say that we have those guidelines in place currently.
Thank you. Is race ever a factor in deciding who's a specialist in that area?
No.
Okay. What do you think is the most effective way to monitor compliance with fair housing laws for your industry?
Well, I think we're doing that. I think that we have to insist that the agents take their compliance classes, the managers in the field with the agents have to make sure that they conduct themselves in a professional manner.
Okay. You talked about strict guidelines that you have developed. Can you talk about a little bit of those guidelines? What has changed since 2020, June 20th? How your guidelines have changed?
Oh, we, we've always had very strict guidelines in place and training in place. That has been part of our DNA for a long, long time. But based on what we saw and we changed the, for example, I had mentioned it, we, agents used to talk about the standards of schools, we tell them not to talk about that anymore. Tell the consumer that they really should go and look on their own, so we're careful about that. But we really have had, and it's, and it's a positive, and we even sent you our training, and we sent you also our policies. We have really been on top of this for a very, very long time. And I think it's just constantly training the agents, making sure that they understand the law. You know, the law sometimes isn't as intuitive to some people as it is to others, and making sure that they understand the law. We used to use.
Thank you, Ms. Conroy.
I understand that, but I want to make sure we all also understand. After this story broke out, you have not fired anybody for any wrongdoing. Every member today that spoke talked about how disappointed, that they welcomed the article, but how disappointed they were in being targeted. No one here talks about the testers. These testers, this is what they felt, we have all of them on tape. And I think something from your, your office should be done by taking into effect and account of what these testers have gone through. With that, I'm going to say thank you, my time is up. Thank you, Chairman Skoufis.
Thank you, Senator Kaplan. Before we get to Senator Kruger, I, I do want to ask Lisa Casabona to please unmute yourself just so you can acknowledge that you are here and effectively a participant. We've asked now twice for you to unmute yourself, and we haven't heard anything from you. So if you could please unmute yourself.
She's texting us, and she's having technical difficulties. She's been texting Jessica, so I, I don't know what her problems are.
It looks like it's muted on there.
She has to unmute it.
She, she would have to unmute it. If she's having technical difficulties or in any other way is not able to participate, we may choose to follow up with her after this hearing.
I understand that. I understand that.
Thank you. So without further ado, Senator Kruger.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate being here with all my colleagues and with the witnesses. And I will say, I'm finding myself very disturbed here. On behalf of Douglas Elliman, and I guess I will direct it to Ms. Conroy since she's the senior person here. So we've read the Newsday articles, we know you have, we've heard the tapes, we know you have. All of your group today have testified they believe they were misrepresented in the article, and yet none of them can explain what they think their definition of directing or misdirecting people in housing is. So it doesn't seem that they even understand what the issues are, even though they believe they were misrepresented. And now, months and months later, when Douglas Elliman is saying that they have trained and retrained, still none of them could define what steering is. They don't think they've seen it, they don't think they've done it, but they don't know what it is. So please explain to me, on behalf of Douglas Elliman, what it is you think you are training people to do to ensure that they do not continue, whether they thought they were or not, these very disturbing patterns of housing discrimination in the work that they do?
I, I, I can only answer it by, as I have answered it, our training is specific. It's writ, it was written by an attorney. It is intense. They have to pass tests many times. They very well know what steering is. Maybe they don't know how to articulate it to your satisfaction, but they know what steering is, and they know that is completely against all fair housing laws. So I would put our training up. I, we've sent you our training. I think that you can see that it is very comprehensive, and we have a zero tolerance policy. If we thought these agents were steering or treating people differently, based on a whole conversation, not looking at snippets of a video, I have, they would have been fired. We don't tolerate it. That is not who we are as a company, and we don't tolerate it. And so the Newsday article, as I said when I started, was very, very disturbing to us because of our stance against discrimination. And we are a very diverse company. So I don't know how we could enhance our training any more than we've done. It's just that comprehensive.
So I just heard you say that, and I believe that there was printed materials, and I'm sure one of my colleagues have it and the staff have it, and I will happily take a look at it. But I just heard your three representatives say, even though they were in the articles, so in theory, they would have been participating in any of the retraining you were doing, they all said they don't even know what steering is or what it looks like. So I have to say, I think that's back to the drawing board for what the training ought to be.
I don't believe that's what they said, Senator. I think they said that they don't see it in their community or with the, with the associates in their office or in the marketplace, and they don't, they don't do it. So they all know what steering is. I mean, that's the first thing anybody learns in the first course you take to become an agent. So, but they don't see it happening, and it's not visible to their eye in their community, and they don't do it. And I think that's what they said.
I think they went farther than that, and said they weren't even sure, they wouldn't even know what it really looked like. And that seems to me to be impossible. My real point is, I believe, based on the testimony I've heard so far, just from this first panel, that people need to go back to the drawing board and revisit exactly what the definitions are. that people need to go back to the drawing board and revisit exactly what the definitions are and how to make sure you are not crossing the line in your daily job performance. Because I suspect very strongly that if there was a follow-up set of tasks in Long Island right now, we probably wouldn't see significant different outcomes from when Newsday was doing their initial evaluation. And that is the fundamental issue that I think concerns all of us in the state legislature. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Kruger. I'm going to come back for a quick set of follow-ups. Before I get to a clip that I want to share, Ms. Conroy, we're going to hear from a number of panels throughout this hearing. Keller Williams of Greater Nassau, Charles Rutenberg Realty, Remax, Coldwell Banker. We've received most, if not all, written comments from them. And so I've had a chance to review them. And I think to a person, including yourself, not a single agent has faced disciplinary actions, by the looks of it, and by, you know, your testimony, the sound of it. And no one's been fired. Given the breadth of the Newsday expose, would you agree that it would be remarkable, in the worst possible use of the word, that not a single agent faced disciplinary actions, potentially from what was revealed?
At Douglas Elliman, I'll only talk for Douglas Elliman. When we, and we really went through these videos and conversations, we did not see any violation of fair housing. So what would we discipline them for? I mean, there was no reason to discipline them. We did not, and we had attorneys look at it for the very reason that, you know, we didn't want to be emotionally involved. We had outside counsel, not even our legal-
Understood. Yeah, and you've said that before. I, I hear you. If we can go to the-
Make sure that they did not violate the laws.
To that point, can we go to Judy Ross's clip, please?
There's a few districts that I know I would like, not, like I won't look in those towns.
Oh, okay.
You know, like Freeport and Baldwin and Amityville, which is part of Massapequa Schools. But it's just certain parts of Massapequa.
Thank you. So, and, and the message that was provided to the minority tester was very different. And certainly that's why Ms. Ross is here. But my question is to Ms. Conroy. You know, it's been stated by you and others on this panel here that because the testers' races weren't explicitly invoked, that somehow that itself means there was no steering taking place. You know, that is like being in a supermarket and a grocer comes over to a customer and says, "Well, I know you're looking at oranges and plums. You know, oranges, they're, they didn't, you know, they're not a good batch today. I wouldn't buy any oranges, but I can't really tell you what you should buy." And they're not referring to anything beyond sort of, you know, their feeling about which way they should go. They're not referring to the color of the orange or the color of the plum. But it's very clear that they're steering the person to a particular item. And so are you, after hearing that, do you feel that just because the agent did not explicitly note, "Hey, there are a lot of minorities in this school district", is that what it would take for you to believe that there was a violation and that this was steering?
No, I, that's why I had said, we have since trained the agents not to discuss anything about school districts. That it can be misconstrued. You know, you don't know what's in somebody's heart when they're speaking. But obviously, if that was shown to me, just that clip, that would make me cringe. And that would be a violation. I would, and I agree that that would be a violation. So we have changed our training and we are making sure that they do not discuss the quality of the schools at all.
And so, so what, you, you just noted, you know, looking at that clip on its face, that's a violation. And so what, what compelled you to not take action? What convinced you that it was not a violation?
Of course, that was a clip, and we discussed the whole picture. And based on the conversations that we had with the agents, we, we wanted to make sure that there was no violation.
So what specifically persuaded you in this instance that it was not a violation?
Well, because I, I mean, I don't have all the notes right now in front of me about the whole conversation and how it was done. But based on the whole experience with the testers, it did not appear to us, or to me personally, that there was a violation. That clip alone would certainly make anybody's hair go up on the back of their neck. That was obviously a very foolish thing to say. And we have since changed how we train our agents to talk about the quality of the schools.
Okay. I'll, I'll wrap up my questions. And I'll just share in my disappointment, and I suspect I will be repeating this over the course of this hearing, based on written testimony we've already received, that it is astonishing to me that I, with everything that was revealed by Newsday, and we are talking an enormous volume of testing that's in place and agents that were on video, that it seems, you know, whether it's your firm or these others, that there was little to, in fact, probably no disciplinary action that was taken in light of all this. I know Senator Kavanaugh had some follow-up.
Great. Thank you very much. I would just note, Senator Scoopis, your sound was breaking out a little bit toward the end there. So I mean, I had it turned off from the mic. Just a few follow-up questions. First of all, Ms. Rogers, how long have you been a real estate agent? I think you're on mute.
Yeah, sorry about that.
That's okay.
I have been an agent since 2012.
Okay. And you mentioned in your testimony that you learned between the two testers that making subjective comments about school districts is considered steering. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So you just, you did not know that at the point that the first, that you were meeting with the first tester?
I, I didn't realize it. I didn't. When I was speaking to the first tester, it was coming from personal experience. I lived in the district and I raised my daughter in the district. And I also went to the district as well.
I understand. So, so knowing what you know now, would you say that making comments about school districts to that first tester constituted steering?
I have not since discussed it at all with anybody.
And again, recognizing that, you know, you're test, you're, you know, you testified that you had no intent, no ill-intent here at all.
Right.
But would you, based on what your understanding now of what constitutes steering, would you say that making those subjective comments about that school district to the first, to the first tester before you got the subsequent training? Based on what you now, know now, would you say that, would you say that that constitutes steering?
I wouldn't say that it constitutes steering at all. I don't think what I, how I said it. I was just, I was speaking pretty much from the heart for the most part, and personal, again, personal experience. You know, but this is, you know, in between, this is what I was told, and I just avoid the conversation now. I just, you know, that's how they put you into training.
But then we're, and part of our goal here is to understand the training and how it works and how it's perceived. So your, your understanding from the training is that comments, whether they're from the heart or from your personal experience or from having gone to schools yourself, that comments about school districts, that, you know, this is a school district to avoid, constitute steering, potentially away from that-
Well, you're telling somebody to avoid a school district. Yeah, I mean, depending on what your reasoning for it.
Okay. So you think it's the intent. If you, if you, if you want to tell somebody to avoid a school district because your personal experience tells them that that would be a bad school district, your understanding based on the training, the current training that Ms. Conroy has mentioned, is that that's not, that's not problematic?
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry. Repeat that again?
Your, your, your understanding as of today is that if you tell a potential home buyer that they should avoid a school district, that's okay if it comes from your personal experience of that school district and your subjective-
I wouldn't tell anybody to avoid a school district.
Okay. Because that potentially violates the fair housing law?
Apparently so. Yeah, yeah. I would never do it. I would never do it.
That's, that's helpful. Back to Ms. Conroy briefly. You, the interactions you mentioned were viewed by your attorneys, but they were also viewed by several of the, two of the foremost experts on fair housing in the state and perhaps in the country. And, you know, they came to the conclusion that these were very problematic interactions. One, Mr. Robert Shrem said that one, one of them was strong evidence of steering, plus evidence of difference in treatment. And that the agent's remarks to the white tester about school districts where, quote, "You won't look in those towns" like Freeport and Baldwin and Amityville was not made to the black tester. There, you know, again, a number of comments, and you, you've read them. Why is your conclusion that different from what the experts in fair housing have concluded?
My conclusion is only different because we sat and spoke to the agent about the entire experience that they, we just see snippets. As I said, if you just see a snippet of these things, obviously you could draw that conclusion. There is no doubt about it. When you sit with an agent and you, and you talk to an agent and you're comfortable that they are not discriminating against anybody and that that was not their intent, then of course you wouldn't have disciplinary action against them. But, but a lot of, a lot of, but was very disturbing, take it out of context, no doubt about it. By the way, I believe that, oh, Lisa Casabona, I just saw her come on. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Okay. So we'll, we'll try to, we'll try to follow back to that. Just, just to follow up once more. And you've meant, you mentioned this during your responses to Senator Scoopis's questions. Well, you've mentioned intent. You've mentioned what's in the heart. Is it possible, in your view, to violate the fair housing laws without intending to discriminate?
Yes, it is. Absolutely, it is.
So if the behavior, if, for example, it were common in your firm for Asian home buyers to have a requirement that they get pre-approval before they see listings, but that were not required of a white home buyer, Mr. Helming in this case, if that, if that were a pattern in your firm, you would view that as a violation of the fair housing laws?
Absolutely, I would.
Okay. And you would view-
Agents have to be consistent. So, and every agent is different. We kind of tell agents that, you know, as you train them on the sales side, let's forget about the discriminations. On the sales side, you know, you don't want to waste a consumer's time. You don't want to waste the seller's time. You don't want to waste your own time by showing homes to somebody who can't afford to buy it. So we kind of like that the agents ask for a pre-approval or they sit down with a mortgage person to make sure that their people are mortgageable. When a, when an agent does not do that consistently, then they get themselves into trouble. So then they shouldn't do it at all. So I absolutely agree with you. If you're going, no matter who sits in front of you, if you have, if you want somebody to make sure that they're mortgageable, then you're not wasting your time, their time, or the homeowner's time showing their house to somebody who can't afford to buy it. Obviously, that's a better sales practice. And it's also, to me, practice of ethics, you know. But, but the truth is, that is definitely wrong. If you allow a white person to see a house without a pre-approval, but not a minority person, obviously that's blatant discrimination. I agree with that.
Okay. So just, I'm gonna, just to respect the other senators and also the many witnesses we have coming, just, I would just note that I have gotten the impression based on your comments today, and I think Senator Scoopis also is alluding to this, a couple of times you've said things that suggested that it is sort of what is in the heart of the agent that matters. It is whether they intend to engage in discrimination. I would just note that, you know, if we're getting that impression from your official remarks here, you know, agents in your firm might be forgiven for getting that impression.
I want to clarify that, please. It was based on why there wasn't disciplinary action. Obviously, I don't feel that way. But why I would fire an agent when we sat down with them, we were comfortable that they would not discriminate. So I absolutely agree with that.
Would you discipline, would you discipline somebody for systematically violating the fair housing law, even if they did not intend any animus toward the, toward any home buyer?
Absolutely. I mean, we've been actually, you know, you asked me how we've changed things. Besides telling them, telling the agents, and now training them to talk about school districts, we also insist that they are consistent, that whatever they do, whether it's somebody going to an open house or putting somebody in their car to show homes, that it's consistent. So we really made sure that they treat everybody the same by writing down what they do with the white person, with the minority. It shouldn't matter what somebody is, but they should be consistent in how they deal with the public. There's no doubt about it. And so we did learn that as well.
So if that's, if that's true, that would be welcome. I would just note, as Senator Kaminsky noted, it may be hard for that message to get across when the stance is that overall, nothing, you know, nothing truly problematic happened here. And so, again, I just, I would urge you to continue to, you know, think about that. And it is, you know, it is disturbing that somebody with, you know, sincere intentions, who's been an agent for a long time, had, did not get the message that you can't tell some people about school districts and not others without getting yourself in trouble. So I'm going to leave it there. But again, thank you to all the witnesses and to my colleagues for this panel.
Thank you, Senator Kavanaugh, Senator Kevin Thomas.
Since we're on the topic of school districts, I have a quick question for Judy Ross. In the tapes that we reviewed, you said something along the lines of the Baldwin School District and the Massapequa School District. What's wrong with them, by the way? What's wrong with those school districts?
Oh, no. I would just, you know, I was addressing the quality of the education. I, the, you know, Newsday is when they actually have a school report card, which lists number of graduates per year and gives you all the information. So-
I mean, is it a coincidence that the only minority areas are the ones that you told the white tester about, but not any, any other school district?
I just rattled off three, and those were the three that I know that the school, my daughter is a teacher, and I know when she was looking for jobs, you know.
All right. Ms. Ann Conroy, did you find anything wrong with that statement?
Which statement? The original?
What your agent just said.
No, I think, I was trying to, you know, when we talk about school districts, it's come to light now since Newsday that it is misconstrued as a racial comment. But every, and I try to explain it, and I, I don't think I communicated well enough, that the standards of schools, it's usually a percentage of kids that go on to college, really goes to the value of the education in the school. And so those rankings are put out, you know, all the time. And there's even a, something online where people could go and find out the percentage of kids that go on to college.
So Ms. Conroy, do you actually use those Newsday rankings to train your agents?
Not anymore. We don't anymore. But those are, those are open to the public. And as I said before, the consumer, I don't care if the consumer is white or a different ethnic background or race. Every parent wants their kid to go to the best schools and get the best education.
Okay. So quick question, quick question. Because I know about the Baldwin School District, their graduation rate is 97%. So what, what, what's the problem there? Are you, like, I don't get it. What's the problem?
No problem there. Why would there be a problem? 97%?
Because one of your agents, one of your agents was trying to steer potential white home buyer from that area. That's why.
I don't know why anybody would do that. No, I don't. I mean, it's really about the quality of the schools. But we're just not talking about it anymore because it can be misconstrued as-
She said stay away.
I'm sorry?
She said stay away from that school district.
She said stay away from that school district.
Yeah.
I don't know. I don't know why. I don't know why she would say that.
I mean, this is why supervision-
I think it's percentage. I think what parents ask for, I mean, if it's grammar school, obviously, you're not going to care about the percentage that go on to college. The high schools, that's what they care about. What is the percentage that go on to college? That's the main thing a consumer asks.
More training is needed, Ms. Conroy.
They just want to know that the kids have a good education.
More, more direct supervision and training is needed for your agents.
Absolutely. I agree with you.
All right.
Because also, you know, sometimes you think you're doing the right thing, but you're really not communicating properly, as I did here today, right? So I want to make sure that you communicate properly.
You may have all the best intentions, but when there's a real impact, when there's a real impact on the community, that's when you have to take action. You cannot just look at that as an isolated incident. As you can see, the Newsday report showed a divided Long Island, divided communities, because we keep thinking of this as, as something that is unintentional. It's not.
I agree with you. I do agree with you. You know, Lisa Casabona is, is on. Can, can I-
Yes, we did see that. Yes, we did see that, and we appreciate her demonstrating that she's been able to participate, and she's been here during the hearing. I think that is it for questions. I want to thank all of you for your testimony. You had the additional challenge of being the first panel. But I do appreciate it, we value it, and, you know, it'll help us develop our legislative path forward, you know, as we move from today and the hearing. So thank you. And I'll now call up the second hearing, or second panel, rather, for the hearing.
Thank you.
So on our second panel is Richard Amato from Keller Williams of Greater Nassau, as well as Kevin, I don't know if I'm pronouncing this correctly, Geddy, who is formerly of Douglas Elliman and is currently at a realty operation called Compass. Are they both here?
Geddy's here. I just want to make sure that he's, he can, he's unmuted. There we go.
I'm here. Hello?
Hello, welcome.
Thank you.
And do we have Mr. Amato? Yes.
Yes, good morning.
Very good. Good morning. If you can both please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you'll tell the truth and nothing but the truth? So help you God. Thank you. Do either of you or both of you have opening remarks?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Amato, why don't you take it away?
Thank you, and good morning, Mr. Chairperson and the members of the committee. Thank you for having me today. My name is Richard Amato, and I am the broker in charge of Keller Williams Greater Nassau. Keller Williams Greater Nassau is an independently owned and operated franchise of Keller Williams Realty. I have been the broker in charge of Keller Williams Greater Nassau since 2014. I have been a licensed real estate professional for nearly 20 years. Prior to my career in real estate, I was born and raised in Long Island City during the 1970s. I grew up in the Ravenswood Housing Projects in the 70s and the 80s, and my father still resides there. I see him regularly. Ravenswood was one of the most diverse housing projects in the city. From this upbringing, I learned to respect and appreciate the incredibly rich and diverse cultural backgrounds of my friends and family. I then proudly served the city of New York and the residents of New York City as a New York City police officer. I carried out my duties as a New York City police officer with great pride and respect for each and every resident of the city that I served. During my eight-year tenure as a New York City police officer, I accounted and served a diverse group of residents. I often accounted many New York City residents in tense and difficult situations from these encounters. I learned to treat all of those I came across with great respect and compassion. I quickly learned that being, that prejudging any situation could result in prejudice and bias in its highest form, and that false or improper assumptions based on stereotypes or superficial characteristics would only negatively impact my service to New York City and its residents. Both my work colleagues and indeed my family are incredibly diverse. As you can see, diversity and inclusions are ideals that I live by on a daily basis. Simply stated, the Senate should know that I would never allow discrimination or prejudice to be present in any organization that I lead or am part of. Moreover, I want to state on the record that a native New Yorker, I would never allow discrimination or racism of any kind in my professional life either. As it pertains to Keller Williams Greater Nassau, the Newsday article, Long Island Divided, it just plain wrong. Newsday allegation as they pertain to Keller Williams Greater Nassau are patently flawed and misguided investigations, which clearly skewed in order to promote a better story for Newsday. A full and fair and non-biased investigation of the facts regarding Keller Williams Greater Nassau will illustrate that we promote an atmosphere of nondiscrimination and compliance with local, state, and federal fair housing and other real estate laws, and that our internal policies and procedures do not tolerate discrimination of any kind. Keller Williams has relationships with 418 real estate sales agents, all of whom are independent contractors. Responsible for running their own business, all the independent contractors are required to be licensed by the state of New York, which requires that they complete a 75-hour salesperson qualifying education course, excuse me, and pass a qualifying examination administered by the Department of State. These agents must maintain their licenses, and are required to successfully complete a 22 and a half hour of approved continuing education every two years, including at least three hours of instruction pertaining to fair housing and/or discrimination in sales or rental of real property and interest in real property. Although these brokers are non-employees of Keller Williams Greater Nassau, we carefully vet each sales agent to ensure that all their credentials are in compliance with current New York State law. The Senate should know that my role as a broker in charge of Keller Williams Nassau, all the complaints less than perfect conduct are taken very seriously and are addressed in a timely fashion to assure proper compliance with all nondiscrimination policies, as well with local, state, and federal law. Keller Williams agents are required to take the National Association of Realtors Code of Ethics training, developed in accordance with Fair Housing Act. Since I became the broker in charge of Keller Williams Greater Nassau, my office has not been subject to any complaint regarding discrimination nor violations of the Fair Housing Act. Thank you for allowing me to make this statement and giving me the opportunity to speak today. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Geddy?
Yep. Thank you for asking me to provide testimony in this important investigation into fair housing and anti-discrimination on Long Island. Like all decent Americans, I detest prejudicial treatment of people based on the color of their skin, their ethnicity, or other irrelevant characteristics. I've always sought to do the right thing in my chosen profession as a real estate agent. By way of background, I'm a native of Sag Harbor. I've worked in real estate sales on the East End for more than five years, and I've helped a diverse array of clients with bought homes, and I expect to continue to do so for many years to come. As you're aware, I was the subject of a fair housing test in 2016, one in August by an African-American tester, and one in October by a white tester, as part of a Newsday project that was published a few years later in 2019. That report suggests that I may have violated fair housing, federal or New York fair housing laws. Nothing could be further from the truth. Indeed, I am deeply troubled by that suggestion, which is not consistent with my values and the way I act in my professional and personal lives. But I am, more importantly, for the Senate's purposes, is also inconsistent with what we can see and what we can hear on the videos and the interactions themselves, and with the listings I actually provided. In each of the tests, I provided a similar overview of geography of the Hamptons and my own background growing up in the area. I was equally attentive and friendly to both of the testers. In fact, I engaged with more follow-up with the African-American tester than I did with the white tester, which Newsday report neglects to mention. The Newsday article suggests that I engaged in steering, based on the distribution of listings that I provided to the testers in a favorable comment that I made about the Hispanic population in Springs. This suggestion is absolutely wrong. In the first place, I was surprised to hear that these two potential clients were part of the same test, because they said very different things to me about what they were looking for. As one example, each tester anchored herself to a particular area, at least as a starting point, the African-American tester to the Springs in East Hampton, the white tester to Southampton. In my listings reflected those preferences. Drawing any conclusion from this combination of clients who presented very different scenarios would be fundamentally unfair. But maybe more importantly, if the body takes a closer look at the census tracts for the listings I provided, you will see the minor, the minor differences in demographic distributions of listings I provided were not statistically significant, which I understand is a factor under the federal housing law, under the federal law for discrimination. Newsday suggested steering, because I listed, because the listings I provided to the African-American tester were in a census tracts that are 75% white, and the listings I provided to the white tester were in a census tracts that are 83% white, 8% difference. The Newsday article doesn't even try to claim that this minor difference is statistically significant, and it is likely because the areas each of the testers mentioned to me as our starting points. Finally, I want to address the statement in the Newsday article about the Hispanic community had taken over the Northwest Woods. Although I acknowledge some clumsiness in my statement, it should be obvious even to a casual listener that this reference in context does not reflect discrimination. Far from it. Specifically, I said that the growth in the Hispanic community is great, because we have a lot more kids now. What I said about the African-American, what I said to the African-American was similar about East Hampton. It's a bit overpopulated, but a great education. Each comment was intended to be positive. I neither felt nor expressed anything derogatory. It is a great honor and pleasure for me to serve the community I grew up in as a real estate agent. As I have said, I appreciate the focus of this hearing on fair housing laws and anti-discrimination principles, but respectfully, I submit that the Newsday article suggests that I failed to comply with those laws or apply those principles is utterly unfounded.
Thank you for your testimony. I'd like to start with Mr. Amato. And as a reminder, actually, first, to my colleagues, if you do wish to ask questions, please just hit the raise hand function within the Zoom. Mr. Amato, both in your testimony you just shared, as well as in your written statement that you sent to us earlier, you're very critical of Newsday's investigation. I would suggest that of all the brokers and CEOs that we have written testimony from, you are probably the most critical of Newsday's expose. Can I first ask, just as sort of a baseline here, Amenta, Abarka, Leanne, Vickery, Rosemary, Miranda, were they, were they agents within your firm at the time of Newsday's testing?
No, sir, just Amenta.
Just Amenta?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The others have no association-
I don't know them.
With Keller Williams?
No.
Okay. So, so let's talk about Amenta, then. She, I, you know, she seemed to, at least to a layperson like myself, I was, was, you know, messaging and requiring, I, I, sort of different prerequisites of the minority tester versus the white tester that Newsday sent to her, where the African-American tester was required to sign an exclusive agreement before being shown any homes, whereas the white tester was not required to sign that same agreement and was, you know, provided a tour without exclusivity. What do you make of that? Why is that not, why is that not treating one type of client differently than another that looks differently?
Great question, and thank you for asking that. So the white tester came in in November of 2016. Okay, and he went into the, to the market center, entered in, and explained everything, and Amenta worked with him for, I believe it was 45 minutes, and she did not ask for a signed brokerage, buyer brokerage. Tester two, the next time came in, I believe it was two or three months later, and asked. Now, if you say to me, Mr. Amato, if Tester two and tester came in a week or a couple of days after the fact, yes, I would have had a problem with that, but since it was a three-month period, or two to three-month period and lag time, in that time, several things happened. Amenta went and took training on a buyer brokerage. Amenta also had a tough time with age, with buyers going out and buying properties, and she felt that a lot of buyers, including Tester one, was wasting her time. So she did feel desperate enough to sit there and ask for a buyer brokerage, so she wouldn't waste the time. She actually wanted to work with that buyer to give him the most attention and work with him. That's what that buyer brokerage is for.
What is your firm's policy on making this sort of a requirement?
We don't have a policy on that. The agents can work, my company policy is, is that if the business is okay for Amenta, what she chose to use, she can use a buyer brokerage, and you can choose not to. You could choose to work with the seller.
Do you agree you have to be at least consistent? You can't-
Yes, I agree you do. You should be consistent, sir.
Okay, and I, what steps have you taken to make sure that the rest of your agents are consistent in light of what was revealed?
Another great question, and what we've done since this, we've, we've implemented training. I've always implemented training on this. I've always worked with it. My offices are very diverse, so I work with all different people and organizations and everywhere we come from. And what I choose to do is, on this specific situation, we took that tape, and I went to several agents in my office, and I went over it with them. And I said, what would we do different here? And I did it individually. I worked with them individually to see, what would you do differently? What would you do differently? What would you do differently?
How many agents are under your license?
118 in Greater Nassau.
418, is that what you said?
Yes, sir.
Yep. And I, can you reasonably assure us that, you know, this is not a matter of practice with those 418 agents?
I'm sorry?
Can you reasonably assure us that this is not happening with other agents?
I believe it's not happening with other agents, sir.
Okay, and so short of just showing this, this clip to your other 418 agents, what steps have you taken to actually try and examine whether they have participated in this kind of behavior? Have you done anything that I-
We, we put in, so we always require them, take the training. We, we make sure, we follow up on them to make sure that they go to the New York State training and get that, you know, their, their license. And every two years, we make sure that 22 and a half hours is done.
So you feel your obligation is just to ensure that they take the training?
No, sir. We bring in special speakers that work with fair housing. I have in my, one of the New York City offices, I bring in compliance officers to talk to the agents on a daily basis. We do daily Zoom calls on this, and we always done it. It's something we always done. We, we're a company that I believe is agent-centric. We help each other, and we go over things together. We, we sit there and work with each other, and we consistently talk about certain situations.
Okay, my, my, my time is up. Just a yes or no answer to this last question. Do you believe that any of your other 417 agents in, you know, let's say, recent history here, the past year or two years, has provided inconsistent requirements like the one we saw with?
I don't believe so, but I do want to say that I will go back and check to make sure. But as of now, I really do not believe so.
How, how will you go back? What does that mean, go back?
I'll go back and talk to every, I go back, I have a daily conversation with all of my agents. I try to keep an open dialogue with every single one of my agents, and I talk to them. I like to get involved with every single agent that works for me.
But I can't imagine anyone's gonna admit to you, yeah, I broke the fair housing laws. I mean, you're taking their word on face value. That's, that's your-
I believe I have to take their word on face value, because I've never gotten a complaint from it, so I would have to take it. And again, when we role-play these on a daily basis, we're consistently talking about it. I would get that answer from them while they were talking to me.
I, I, my time is up, and respect for my colleagues, and I'll just make the comment that, you know, it's hard for someone to lodge a complaint, because they would have no idea whether, how they're being treated is inconsistent. They have no idea how the client that comes in after them is being treated. And so they have no idea to make a complaint, hey, you did this for me, but you didn't do it for the next guy. They don't know anything about the next guy. So I would encourage you, you know, to, to perhaps not just take their word on face value, because, you know, people would not know to make that sort of complaint. Senator, I'll go to Senator Thomas.
Thank you, Senator Scoop. As I have a quick question for Richard Amato. As a broker who's been licensed for over 20 years, you were previously exempt from completing CE requirements. Is that, is that correct?
No, sir. No, sir, it wasn't. I just missed that deadline.
You just missed the deadline?
Yes, sir.
Do you think that the grandfather clause contributed to poor supervision by some longstanding licensees of their staff?
That is a very good question, and I never thought of that, but yeah, I could see that being possible. That's a very good question. I could see that possibly being true.
Okay. Next couple of questions is for Mr. Geddy.
Yes.
All right. In the Newsday recording, you had said to the white tester that Hispanics had taken over an area. Do you know that mentioning the demographic makeup of a neighborhood is prohibited?
It was such a clumsy way of approaching a situation. I did not know it at the time. I was two years in the industry and still learning to be the best agent I could be. I, looking back at everything, I would definitely reword any way of that possible.
Now, like, during your training phase, how much supervision were you getting?
I was formerly with Douglas Elliman. As the lady had mentioned before, there were classes, there were group classes. They tried to make you go as much as possible. I tried to go as much as possible. You can never be, you know, overeducated, so I feel more, it's always better.
But is there, like, someone that would walk around with you during a potential showing of a house or anything like that?
No, sir. What would happen was, they would put you in a room with an attorney that they hired that would try to beat all the rules of federal fair housing into your head. And it was my, my job to learn as muchly, as much and as quickly as- And it was my, my job to learn as muchly, as much and as quickly as possible. And I admit, being new into the business, there's no excuse, but with time, I want to perfect it.
All right, so the training was inadequate from what I'm hearing from you. That you, there was some attorney trying to beat down all the rules and regulations into your head. It just was not clicking, and I see that as a pattern with a lot of these agents. These classes are just not adequate. Back to Mr. Amato, did you hear the answer that Mr. Getty just gave about the training aspect?
You're coming in and out. It's coming in and out of the questions.
Did you hear the answer, Mr.?
I didn't get a full answer, sir, no.
All right, so I had asked him about his training prior to him showing houses. And he basically said he was in a room with an attorney that was just beating rules and regulations into his head. And that's the kind of training that he received, and I'm assuming that's how several of your agents are trained as well. I believe, again, there's a pattern here where, you know, inadequate training is given. You know, they perform the way they do and then they get caught. Do you have any plans of changing the way you guys train these agents? Because they need more supervision.
I, I do agree with you. I do believe that, and I want to be a part of any solution that we, that it could be. And to help and change the policies and the procedures and the training. I do agree with you. I'm not in every training class, so I can't tell you how it, how it was done. If, if Kevin is stating that, then I'm going to take his word on it too, that he has taken it, because that's what he just stated. And yes, I think that needs to be changed.
And do you believe maybe having someone walk with him, like someone who's licensed, walk with him while he shows a house? So that they can critique how he talks to a potential home buyer? Maybe that should be in the training?
So we do have that. We have buddy programs where senior agents do go out with newer agents, yes, sir.
Okay, do you know how often that's done, though?
It's done quite often. It's done quite often. For newer agents that join the company, we, we, we guide them to that. We do. It's not mandatory, you know, sir, but we do encourage the fact that they should do that because they want to learn.
Maybe, maybe we can make that mandatory going forward?
I can definitely look at that.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Senator Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Senator Scoopis. So, Mr. Getty. Senator Thomas covered this a little bit, but just for the record. When you were speaking with the white tester, you described the ethnic makeup of Springs as follows. You said, what you see a lot more in East Hampton is the Hispanic community came in. And they really took over Springs and Northwest Woods area, which is great because we have a lot more kids now. So their high school is drastically bigger than Southampton. Talking with the black tester, Mr. Hackett, about the same high school. You said only East Hampton is really, really, I don't know how to say, it's overpopulated, I feel like. Can you, you said, you mentioned already that you thought that was a clumsy way of describing the school district. Can you, can you explain what, what it is that you were trying to express, even if it was clumsy?
Certainly, and if I could just explain my full sentence, which was, it's a bit overcrowded, but still a great education. Both instances were only meant to be positive. Nothing was meant to deter or steer someone from going to either location. I grew up in the area. I was vomiting of the mouth just trying to talk, and I admit, very clumsy.
Okay, and obviously, a lot of the training, a lot of the goal of training is to make sure agents are careful in the way they speak about these things. But you subsequently didn't show the white tester any homes in that area. Is that correct?
I would love to. She anchored herself to Southampton. Her mother was in a rehabilitation center in Southampton. She was commuting out from the city. There's an hour and a half difference depending on traffic. It made more sense for her to be closer to Southampton from what she and I understood. I asked her to look at everything, but when you send someone 10 to 15, 20 listings, it can become blurry. She admitted, let's start with five houses. We'll start there, we'll look elsewhere afterwards. It's more of a check off the boxes as you go. It wasn't meant to stop there.
Okay, and you left Douglas Elliman and began working with Compass in 2000, January 2018?
Yes, sir.
Subsequent to these incidents?
Oh, no, sir. When I was already happily housed at Compass when I found out that this had happened.
Right, but, but the, the actual events that took place were when you were at Douglas Elliman?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Douglas Elliman's representative, a lawyer, Mr. Rosenberg, said that your remarks, I'm going to quote here again. Are inconsistent with Douglas Elliman policies and applicable law and are not tolerated. Had Douglas Elliman been informed of such remarks at the time they were made, Douglas Elliman would have taken immediate and appropriate corrective disciplinary action. I would just note that this is pretty remarkable, given that Douglas Elliman just testified that they've disciplined no one. As a result of this investigation, are you surprised that Douglas Elliman is singling you out? As a person who should have been disciplined, as the only person who is not with their firm as they're making that decision?
If I could answer this question to the best of my ability. I admit I was clumsy. What Douglas Elliman would have done with me would have been their own decision to make with me. I can't speculate what they would have done with me, but I do find it highly ironic what she just said before.
Okay, and you, you presumably have had a chance to review the materials on other Douglas Elliman agents since, since the investigation came out?
It was a very lengthy article, as we all are aware, and I did my best to dissect it as much as possible and, and really learn more about it. To be honest, my main focus was what I ported in that whole entire investigation and not so much focus on other colleagues.
Okay, do you, so based on what you know now, you know, the, the experts on fair housing reviewed this, reviewed these interactions. A Mr., you know, sorry, Mr. Freiberg said that your comments about Hispanics having taken over the area. And recommendations of houses only in that area to Mr. Hackett. And the fact that you provide listings only to Olson Cop in Sag Harbor and Southampton after praising the schools. That conduct indicates differential treatment. Do you accept that conclusion at this point?
No, sir, I do not. I detest completely, whereas both individual anchor themselves to completely different areas. And as a larger scale, if you look at Southampton to East Hampton, I almost consider it as New York to, you know, Los Angeles. It's a wide in between, and I don't try to make someone go the other way unless they tell me they want to be there. Although I did reiterate, please let's look at everything on the market to make sure you're getting the best deal.
You, you concede at this point that making comments about a certain ethnic group. Taking over a neighborhood is prohibited under fair housing law?
It was such a clumsy way to ever put it. It was never intended to ever deter or talk badly about someone. It was, in my opinion, something that was great.
Okay, so just, just to conclude, and we, we had this conversation with intent versus, you know, the fact of what you do in the last panel as well. But making that comment, making comment about the ethnic composition, based on your understanding now and the training you've had since that time, which was a number of years ago. You understand making a comment about the ethnic composition of a community changing and a particular ethnicity taking over a neighborhood. You understand making that comment as a violation of the fair housing law at this point?
I was not.
Even if it was inadvertent or unintentional?
I was not aware of that, and with intention or non-intention, I was not aware of that. I continue to grow and learn as much as possible, and thank you for bringing that up.
But your understanding today is that that's not a comment you should make?
It should definitely not be in common. There's nothing that should be worded that way. It was clumsy. I apologize.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Kavanaugh. Next up is Senator Kaminsky.
Mr. Getty, when you said Hispanics had taken over, what did you mean?
To be honest with you, I, I didn't mean anything by it. I don't know what I meant. It was diary of the mouth. I, I just was saying that, you know, it's a great community. It used to be vacant there. Whatever families moved there brought kids, and it's a thriving community now.
That's what you meant by that comment, that you were, you were giving positive attributes to the community by saying Hispanics had taken over?
Yes, sir. I truly believe it was only the best intention. It was worded poorly.
Okay, on behalf of people with brains everywhere, I want to let you know how ridiculous that sounds. When someone says the Jews took over a community, X took over a community, it's not meant in a positive way. You know that. What they're trying to say is there's an ethnic group in this neighborhood. They're there. You're not part of that ethnic group, so you better be careful. Probably isn't a place you want to live. Do you deny that obvious common sense reality?
I don't feel that way.
Okay, well, I, I think the, the comments that you said on tape when you didn't know people were listening to your words are the best. The best inkling we have, the best evidence we have of who you really are. And when you said Hispanics had taken over an area, it said everything we need to know about what actually really takes place in the real estate world. What you do when you're out there operating when you don't think people are listening. And it's, actions exactly like that that have caused. The current status of our divided Long Island. So I, I think you may have chosen the wrong industry. I think you were caught red handed. And I think there's nothing else to say other than that. The lack of people accepting responsibility or the industry doing anything about it during this hearing is astounding. Any hope that we might have had that the industry would decide that it's reached a critical inflection point and wants to better itself. Has just completely been eviscerated by this hearing. Everyone's doing these blaming the other person. Douglas Elliman throwing you under the bus when you left there, even though their people did things just as bad that they won't acknowledge because they're still under their license. And you're out there saying Hispanics took over a neighborhood, but you don't even know what you were saying. It was just diary of the mouth. I don't even know what I say half the time. I mean, you know, words just come out of my brain. Who knows who put them there? Our society demands better. We deserve more accountability, and what we heard today is just astounding. And it means that we've got work to do, that it's going to take real government oversight, action, legislation, penalties to change things here. And I'm sorry, Mr. Getty, that you were the one who got caught doing it, but caught is what you were. Thank you, Chairman Scoopis.
Thank you, Senator Kaminsky. Next is Senator Kaplan.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. So. This is a question for either one of you. Many of the agency's heads testifying here today have said there was no discriminatory intent on their conduct. The sales agents, even after receiving training, still testify that they don't believe their conduct was discriminatory. My question is, since the Newsday investigation clearly shows we continue to have a problem, we need to do better. Does your new and improved training include training on implicit bias, which is identified as attitudes or stereotypes? That affect our understanding, actions and decisions in our unconscious manner? Some of the bias shown by your agents in the video could potentially be described as having been done in an unconscious manner. Given the repeated denials of discriminatory intent. I'd like to know, what measures have you taken to counter this glaring problem?
I'd like to answer that. I'm open to, to definitely looking into that and going further with it. And what, what we have taken, what we have done is, again, we have daily Zoom calls right now, and unfortunately, we can't have in person, you know, to, to a big crowd. But we're having daily Zoom, Zoom calls to get to know each other. To know and make sure that everything is being done the right way and getting across.
Do you talk about it? Do you talk about unconscious manner of bias?
Absolutely. At, at least I hope I do, and I, you know, Senator. Again. I've always been like this. I've always tried to be fair in life with everybody, so I talk about it on a daily basis.
I appreciate that. I, I feel, I understand and I listen to your testimonies. And I see that you clearly don't see how this is being translated. But I also understand and see the testers and what they've gone through. So there has to be an effort here made to make sure that we are not making unconscious discriminatory. Decisions or comments, and that's going to come from the top up all the way to, to every member that you represent.
I was just going to say that I believe that New York State would need to require something like that.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. And unless my fellow chairs have additional questions, I, I believe that is all we have. Senator Kavanaugh, do you have anything more?
No, I'm good. Thank you very much. Just to, just to again, thank the witnesses for appearing today.
Thank you.
Very good. Thanks to you both, and we'll now move on to the third panel.
Thank you. Have a good one. Thank you.
So next up, we have a number of individuals from Charles Ruttenberg Realty. Namely, Joseph Moshi, Stephanie Giordano, Maurice Johnson, and Edwin Torres. If you can, please turn on your video. Okay, I think we're, is Stephanie here? I see her. If you can, please turn on your video. Ms. Giordano, if you're there, if you could please turn on your video. Okay, well, we will, I proceed in the meantime without her for now. The expectation is that she ought to be able to join us and participate here, and so we look forward to that. But in the meantime, if the rest of you could please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you'll tell the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Who has opening remarks? Joseph, why don't you take it away?
Sure. First off, I want to thank you for conducting this hearing. Anything that we can do to eliminate. Unconscious and conscious systemic racism in our society is welcome. I want to start by saying about our agency is Charles Ruttenberg is probably the most diverse agency on Long Island. With Asians from all corners of the earth. Okay, speaking approximately 50 languages. I know that Charles Ruttenberg stands for fair housing and equal opportunity. These are bedrocks on which we have built our entire company. We not only train our agents accordingly, but we also work with an environment where uniqueness is celebrated. We practice what we preach by becoming the most inclusive real estate company amongst our competition. Most importantly, we provide incredible opportunity to our agents to succeed professionally. Our company model is quite different from those of other large real estate companies. This provides an opportunity for every individual who chooses to work in real estate, thereby creating a company rich in diversity. Charles Ruttenberg Realty agents range between 18 and 90 years old. They live in every possible borough, town, village, county, and zip code in the New York metropolitan area. They live in every, they serve every neighborhood because they live in every neighborhood. We do not invest a huge numbers of brick and mortar buildings in house of our agents because that is not the direction of real estate in this decade. The public does not knock on the real estate door to find housing. They search on the internet. When they do, they find a Charles Ruttenberg agent who knows and lives locally. They will find an agent. Who can speak to them in a language they understand. On our website, you can choose different languages to speak to different agents, if that's what you so desire. From the very moment that an agent becomes their career in Charles Ruttenberg. They are notified that they are invested in delivering housing opportunities to every individual who seeks our assistance. When they walk through the door, they see the fair housing declaration in our lobby if they visit our facility. When they enter our conference room to be interviewed. It is displayed again when they sign our new agent paperwork. We include nondiscrimination documents and compliance documents that they must sign, which outlines their obligations. We over and over. Tell our agents and supervise them and educate them about fair housing and discrimination. I can't, I can't emphasize that enough, that there is no room for discrimination in our society. I can't, I can't emphasize that enough, that there is no room for discrimination in our society. All agents are required to take our new agent orientation within 60 days of joining. I am there instructing them. We discuss fair housing and present written educational materials to help them understand their obligations to the public. They are instructed to check our website for additional resources that we have for them to better understand what they can and cannot do, say or print. We outline our company best practices, which include making sure to treat each client and customer identically, to document to the best of their ability and to read all company updates regarding changes in the law, which we continually provide. We have a robust line presence for our agents. In addition to weekly at a minimum training, I host an online chat for our agents, which is available 24/7. I also send a minimum of three emails a day with relevant updates. Relevant. Of industry standards and best practices, fair housing and the law are common topics. The rental market is an area where fair housing is often a topic of discussion. We run a class on a regular basis, which includes industry experts. At that time, we convey the importance of equal treatment under the law.
If you can please wrap up, your time is up.
I'm sorry. Okay, I will. We monitor every license renewal, CE obligations, and we specifically mentioned fair housing in many, many documents that we use. We also recently have inputted in place many different and new programs in place to increase our training and education.
Thank you very, thank you. Anyone else have testimony or remarks, opening remarks? Okay, okay. Yes, please. Go ahead.
My name is Maurice Johnson. My, my initial statement was previously submitted to Mr. Little, who I understand is the Senate's counsel. However, I would like to, you know, first read the first few paragraphs from my statement that was submitted. Thank you for the opportunity to provide this statement, which reiterates and or supplement some of my answers given on February 13th, 2020. I'm an African American male who has been subjected to direct and indirect discrimination and or racial prejudice, both in my personal and professional life. Consequently, because of my experiences and background, I'm not only extremely sensitive to treating everybody equally, but I try to be involved whenever I can in organizations that promote equality and opportunities for minorities. In this regard, for example, I'm actively involved with the Neighborhood Assistance Corporation of America, often speaking about housing.
I messed something up.
Often speaking about housing related issues, most of whom are minorities. Moreover, while I have had, while I have and have had clients who are white and substantially majority of my business comes from black and Latino individuals, therefore to publicly declare as Newsday did through supposedly objective expert opinions based on nothing more than two approximate 45 minute conversations and analysis of computer generated house listings separated by three weeks that I engaged in racial and or ethnic discrimination with regard to how I conduct myself in my chosen profession was not merely personally offensive and likely professional, professionally damaging, but patently absurd. Consequently, I have never checked, engaged and never will engage in any type of discrimination, racial or otherwise, whether in my personal life or in my professional life. Likewise, I have never steered any client to a particular neighborhood, either because of the neighborhood's racial or ethnic makeup or because of the client's racial, I'm sorry, or because of the client's racial makeup. Last, I have never treated one client differently than another because of his or her race or ethnicity. While I have received significant training from Charles Rutenberg Realty on fair housing issues, comply with my continuing education requires I'm generally knowledgeable about fair housing issues. I don't need to be trained to be given continued, I don't need to be trained or be given continued education or provide literature to read, I'm sorry, requirements I'm generally knowledgeable about fair housing issues. I don't need to be trained and be given continued education or provide literature to read to know that no person should be treated differently because of race or ethnicity with regard to housing or anything else. As I understand it, Newsday and its experts have generally claimed that I treated the Hispanic tester unequally, not as well in comparison with the white tester. And I did so because of discriminatory animus against the Hispanic tester based on his and or ethnicity. I categorically deny both unequal, unequal treatment and discriminatory motivation and will address Newsday's completely speculative conclusions in more detail below. The follow reasons I challenge the fairness of Newsday's investigation as well as its expert speculative conclusions as to both of my actions and motivations.
Okay, thank you very much. I think I saw Ms. Giordano's hands raised. Yeah, if you can.
Thank you. Can you hear me today?
Yep.
I, first, I want to thank you all for being here with me. I appreciate the opportunity to come. And I understand and have listened to the hearings prior to this and my colleagues in the field. I would like to first and foremost read the statement that you already have. But please, in the middle of my statement, I would like to just say a word or two, just because I feel very strongly about it. Okay? You have my written statement, all of you. I thank you for the opportunity to provide this written statement, which reiterates the supplement to the answer given on February 5th. Before I continue, I want to make it clear to everyone here that this is my father, Albert Cruz. I am Hispanic and black. These are my siblings, which are Hispanic and black. I would like to also make note that I am a lesbian woman in the community who has fought with Governor Cuomo for equality in our community. I want the governors and the Senate or the senators here today to hear me when I say I always walk, have always walked with equality in this, in, in, in my life and in my business. And Senator Thomas, I implore you to listen. I would ask that you read my statement through my attorney. I will just briefly read what he has asked, and then please ask me any questions. According to the Public Declaration of Newsday, the supposed objectives, the expert opinion, I engaged in racial or unethical discrimination with regards to how I conduct, conduct my business. It is not merely, it is not merely professionally damaging to me, but it is my personal feelings about this that is damaging to me. I have walked with equality. I have been with, I was, at the time that I was tested with Charles Rutenberg Realty. And I would again like to reiterate that Charles Rutenberg gave great training. I spoke to Mr. Moshe many times about equality. He afforded me an opportunity as a lesbian woman to conduct business in Brentwood at my address at 1600 Caleb's Path. He afforded me an opportunity to manage one of his locations, and I thank him for that opportunity. The, the testers that came to me during this test were, in my opinion, if you saw all the videos, Newsday did not provide any of us or all of us with all the evidence in this particular testing. You saw two tests. There were five tests that were, that were conducted. Five tests in which the Hispanic tester had asked me to go to predominantly white area, which would have been Ronkonkoma, and in addition to that, Holbrook. I took the Hispanic tester to those areas. When I asked Arthur, he is the author of this test. When I asked Arthur to provide me with those videos, he refused. And in addition, he stated that there was nothing in the videos that would have shown steering. I invite the senators today to bring my videos up today and show me where I might have steered someone along the way. I additionally want to bring to the senators' attention that the testers were both provided a link which enabled them to change the criteria at any time, any day, any hour, and they were instructed upon how to use it. Okay? Additionally, the white tester never asked me, if you were testing me about inequality, you would ask the white tester to say, bring me to Brentwood. And then I would have to say to steer. But the white tester never requested, the Hispanic tester requested showings in predominantly white areas and were given those showings. Okay? I just want to say that the Newsday experts, when I went in with Newsday to respond, I have and still emphatically denied any source of, or any type of steering. I ask you today, because I've come here, not because you've subpoenaed me, but because this is my first opportunity to speak with you, to say, please, show me if I, if, if, if you have some proof of me steering, which never would happen, that you bring it to me today in this hearing. I, I know my time is up, senators. I appreciate you and I appreciate you letting me speak. I know that I have been a little bit more animated because I believe in what I'm saying. The test showed 10% difference in properties that I showed or, or sent, not showed, sent to. I never sent a single property. The algorithm of the computer sent the properties. I did not send a single property. And when those testers asked to see any community, I showed them.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Giordano. Mr. Torres, do you have anything to say before we get to questions?
Uh, yes, I would like to thank everybody for being here in the meeting. I just wanted to, I mean, I'm going to be brief. I've been with Charles Rutenberg since 2009. They do a lot of training, like they mentioned, virtually, you know, in person. I primarily, most of my sales have been to minorities, a 90% to 95% minorities. So for me to be considered discriminating towards minorities, that would be completely against what I do. So, I mean, like I said, I'm going to be brief. That's all I have to say for now. And I don't agree with Newsday's report.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to start with you, Mr. Torres. The, the testing that, or the testers that were engaged with you, I, and please correct me if I'm mischaracterizing this. The, the white tester was not required, you waived the requirement for a pre-approval from their lender. The African American tester was required to obtain a pre-approval letter from you. Is that accurate?
Let me explain. The black, the black tester sat down with me just like the white tester. I explained the same thing to both. The black tester simply understood that he needed to get a pre-approval, but he still wanted to see a home. I indicated that I would need a pre-approval. The white tester must have stayed at least half an hour in my office without leaving until I told him, okay, I'll show you a house. So he was very eager to see a house, very eager. So I just, I made a misjudgment and I said, okay, I'm going to show it to you, but I need you to get your pre-approval. After a week or so that he didn't get a pre-approval, I just simply stopped working with him. The black tester in reality never showed, you know, that dedication to go get a pre-approval. So he never got shown a home.
So, so what is, if I may ask, what is your criteria for requiring pre-approval of a client or not? Is it how pushy they are?
My criteria beforehand was it's all based on your interest. We're, we're here to provide a service. And the more interested you are as an individual, that's, that sometimes triggers your, you know, you bending the rules, if, if you want to call it that way, to be able to show them a house. But now, after the training that I've gone through, I'm not taking anyone out if you don't have a pre-approval. No ifs or buts about it. Do I get pushback from the public? Yes, because they want to know why do you need a pre-approval?
Well, you don't, and this was, this was discussed with the last panel. You don't need to require a pre-approval. You need to be consistent with whether you require a pre-approval or not. And your characterization of bending the rules, for someone who finds out after the fact that they were treated very differently, I suspect that, you know, that African American, that minority would, would not just mildly characterize it as bending the rules. They would find it offensive and quite frankly, it would be illegal. It's so, you know, it, it seems a recurring pattern with all these panels that there is an epiphany that happens after, you know, Newsday publishes their video or their story. And, you know, they go through this additional training and now, you know, I, I, I would never do that today. Um, you know, I suspect that we're not quite getting the, the full story. If I may move to Maurice, Mr. Johnson, you had mentioned you have been subject to discrimination personally as an African American man. And I, I wonder, you know, the hearing we've heard from the principals of these companies, the written testimonies from folks who are going to, to be with us later today. It, it seems as though, at least as far as I could tell, that a single Realtor, not a single agent has been fired as a result of, as a result of what has come about from this Newsday expose. The enormous volume of testing, the enormous volume of videos. And perhaps even if you can argue, okay, well, this one was a gray area. This one, you know, I don't believe Newsday. To suggest that every single one of, of these allegations is discredited is unfathomable to me. As an African American man who just testified that you have been discriminated against, how do you feel about the fact that not a single real estate agent, as far as we can tell from the principals who are testifying today, have held any of their agents accountable?
Well, I mean, I don't, I didn't really look at too many of the other agents. I only concerned myself with the accusations that was brought against myself. So I didn't really follow the stories of all the other agents and what happened to them and what those agencies did or did not do. Because I was just more or less upset that Newsday tried to steer. And that's, and I'm definitely using that word for Newsday's purposes.
Yeah, I understand your feelings about the allegations lodged against you. But, you know, do you not have any sort of fundamental emotional reaction to the fact that there doesn't seem to be any accountability on the other side of this Newsday expose?
Well, that's what I'm saying. I didn't, if they did something wrong and it can be proven that they did something wrong, then there should be discipline taken care of. Whether it's discipline, whether it's training or a combination of them all, yes, something should be done. That's what I'm saying. I concern myself. I concerned everything that was going on with myself and what was being displayed with me. I wasn't really concerned about everybody else. And like I said, I have been discriminated against. And I've been discriminated against even with Newsday itself throughout my years of living where I live. So it's like, it's to me, before you say anything, for Newsday to bring about an article about discrimination, if you asked a lot of black people, especially in the community where I live at, they can tell you how often we've been discriminated against by Newsday blatantly. And no senators that I know of, nobody in the local government ever even addresses that. I'm a, I'm a public person. At what point do we address that? And it's plenty of documentation, but at what point do the senators say, well, let's go up against Newsday for the blatant discrimination on how they show black people committing crimes versus white people? The narrative is always different. The way they publicize it on their front page. We have documentation for years, but now I have to sit and listen to Newsday completely pull out certain pieces of information to try to paint this narrative, which they do very well.
Okay, thank you. So I'll just remind everyone, just remind everyone that this hearing is about the housing discrimination that's been raised, not about other issues that have been portrayed or not portrayed. Just a yes or no question because my time is up. Mr. Moshe, I have, just to confirm, have any of your agents subsequent to this investigation faced with discipline? Just yes or no, please?
No.
Okay, thank you. Senator Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Senator Scoop. So I'm just gonna, a few questions for Ms. Giordano. Am I saying that right?
Yes.
Okay, great. So before we get to the evidence from the investigation, I want to address something from your statement. And I'm going to quote you. Um, and I'm gonna quote, you said that, uh, you did not conduct yourself with a racially discriminatory animus. Do you think we need to find, uh, discriminatory animus in order to find violation of the fair housing laws?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Senator. I didn't hear you fully.
Does, does there need to be discriminatory animus? I think those are your words from your statement, in order to find a violation of the fair housing laws?
Sir, I don't know how you will, um, navigate through fair housing. I can only speak for myself and the way I respond to fair housing. Um, and I can tell you that I, I would, I would invite you, sir, to explain to me where I was discriminatory in any way, fashion or form in all five videos. Do you have all five videos, sir?
Yeah, we, we can, we can perhaps have that conversation.
Because I, I wasn't actually, Senator, Senator, I just want to say one thing. I was not provided with all five videos. So you're asking me to respond to something that I haven't even been completely...
Ms. Giordano, just with all, with great respect, I, I'm just asking you what you meant by a particular thing you said in your written statement and you repeated here orally. I, I'm trying to understand, before we get into any of the particulars here.
Yes.
If one, if people of one race or ethnicity are, are treated, are routinely treated differently than people of another race or ethnicity, in your mind, can we call that discrimination? And does that violate the fair housing laws?
Well, sir, I can only tell you my own experience, okay? As a lesbian, black Hispanic woman, I have been discriminated against many times. Questions asked about, uh, one way or another. But, sir, I do not at all ever ask anybody any of those type questions. So do, is there discriminat-? We saw the Newsday article. Is there discrimination that has happened? I would say that there is.
Okay, and that discrimi- again, that, because, because, just to be clear, like the, the, the way brokers and people in the business understand the laws is part of what we're talking about today. Because, because we're talking about training and we're talking about, you know, how to alter behavior. Um, in your mind, if someone is asking inappropriate questions or if someone is treating somebody differently based on their race or ethnicity, they can be violated the fair housing laws, even if they don't have what you call a discriminatory animus? Is that right?
Sir, again, when you're saying a discriminatory animus, let's define that in your, in it with you.
Well, those are your words, so why don't you define?
And, sir, and, and, and just so that we're all understanding, okay, together. I want it to be very clear for everybody here.
Okay, so how would you define that to make it clear for everybody?
In what way would you like me to define it?
They're your words. I'd like you to tell us what you meant by them.
Sir, here's what I say. Here's what I have to say. I never discriminate against anyone based on any of the protected classes and/or the non-protected classes, ever.
If someone in your business were to treat Hispanic homebuyers differently from non-Hispanic homebuyers and do that routinely, in your mind, based on your training and your experience in the industry, that would, and you said you were, you had a supervisory role as well, that would constitute discrimination? Even if they did not...
I'm sorry, sir.
...do bad things to happen to people?
Sir, any discrimination, whether intended or non-intended or, or non-intentional, is discrimination. And I think as agents, we understand what discrimination is. I personally understand what discrimination is. I cannot speak for my colleagues. I can only speak for myself. And please, don't ask me to make such a broad statement for all of my colleagues. For myself, I understand completely, unemphatically, what discrimination looks like. And I will say to you that I have never participated in it. Additionally, I would ask you today in this hearing to provide me proof of the discriminatory action that you are implying that I am taking. I invite you to ask for all five of my videos to be displayed for all the senators to hear and see it.
Ms. Giordano, first, we'll, we'll perhaps have, we'll have additional, perhaps have additional questions for you and, and maybe we'll get into some of those issues. But again, I'm, I haven't implied anything about your conduct other than asking you what something...
Newsday has implied that I steered her.
That's fair enough.
Additionally, they have, they have put my name into a newspaper article on page 15. I was not a part of the expose because there was nothing clear. There was no discrimination, sir.
Okay, again, we'll, we'll probably get into that in a minute, but my time is up. So I'll yield it back.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and if I may just remind all the witnesses, I, to, you know, we, after asking questions, are, uh, to the extent practicable within our time, allowing for a response and, you know, please allow, uh, my colleagues and I to get out our questions or comments without being interrupted. Um, Senator Thomas?
Thank you. Uh, I have a question for Mr. Moshe. Um, according to, uh, the documents that you had submitted, uh, you supervise about 896 agents, is that correct?
Yes.
And, uh, the Plainview office alone has about, uh, what, 834 agents, correct?
Yes.
Uh, the three agents Newsday flagged for potential fair housing violations are all from the Plainview office, correct?
Uh, well, uh, not really, no. At the time of the, uh, of the incident, I believe, uh, Ms. Giordano was, uh, in a branch office.
And so, okay, do you think that one licensed real estate broker can properly supervise 834 agents?
Absolutely.
Okay, you need to explain that.
Excuse me?
You need to explain how one licensed broker can supervise the actions of more than 800 sales agents.
Okay.
Explain that to me, because it's, it's, it's mind-boggling to basically, uh, sit down with every single one of these agents uh, and to help them sell the American dream to individuals that are out there.
Okay, let me, let me describe to you. First off, first off, which is very important in our company, we do not take on new real estate agents as a matter of policy. Any agent who joins my company has to have experience in the industry, which we, um, know that during the course of their education as being a licensed real estate, they have to take education on an ongoing basis. We also look for many of them to have, uh, done transactions. We interview them before they come on board. So we do a fair amount of work to ensure that the agents who join our company will represent our company professionally and are, uh, educated enough to perform the duties that we very intently provide and mandate.
Here's the thing, here's the thing. Everyone is human, all right?
Thank you.
Including these agents here that are defending themselves from the actions that Newsday recorded them doing. I don't think they are bad human beings at all, but there needs to be proper supervision. To say that you, being the broker, hold, like, su- being able to supervise more than 800 of these agents who are human beings, who go out there and sell homes and show homes, is a very surprising answer to me.
Okay, Ms., Ms., Mr. Thomas, I've, I've heard your statements before. And I think what you're looking for, honestly, is unrealistic in the sense that you cannot go out and be with an individual every time they take out a buyer and every time they go and show an open house. That is physically impossible for even an agency that has five agents. It just doesn't...
Well, that's not what I'm asking with Mr. Moshe. What I, what I'm saying is during their training process, because I've heard testimony from others where they are simply put in a room and, uh, injected with legalese, uh, uh, about the rules and regulations that they just simply don't comprehend, uh, you know, what's happening out there when they show homes, right? There, your bottom line as a company is to make profit. And hiring as many of these sales agents basically helps you meet your goal. I just don't see how someone can supervise, someone can supervise 800 agents.
Let me define it.
Because they're all human beings and you just don't have the capacity to do it.
Let me define it, okay? First off, when you talk about 800 agents, you talk about, and I'm sure everyone here has heard, the 80/20 rule. Is that, I'm sure everybody knows that. If not, I'll be happy to explain it. Eight, 20% of the agents do 80% of your business. And 80% of your agents only do 20% of your business. So to categorize that I have to supervise 800 agents that work along the lines of Mr. Johnson, Mr. Torres and Ms. Giordano is not accurate. These are active agents. These are good agents. These are agents that have the ability to perform their functions, honestly, credibly, without discrimination, okay? That don't require day-to-day supervision. When they do, they will tell you that they have access to me and my staff 24/7 for any reason, any question that they can have, to provide supervision for them.
But Mr. Moshe, the undercover...
Please, okay. That they will, they can answer me any question about whether it's a, a question on fair housing, discrimination, commission, uh, not being cooperated amongst the agency, anything that they ask in the real estate industry, they will get a response immediately, not within 24 hours. They will get a response immediately. And that's how my office supervises. We have an excellent staff that provides them with education and support. And I use the word "support" uh, uh, with emphasis. Okay? So remember, we're not talking about 800 agents being supervised in the field on a daily basis. You're talking about a much, much lower number. And many of those are very, very professionally qualified.
But, Mr. Moshe, the investigations in the undercover video shows, you know, something else.
I disagree with you. I disagree with you. I disagree with you.
You would, you would, but again, it goes...
I would, because my agents, my agents, okay? And I saw those videos. My agents were very professional, extremely professional in their presentations. There was no discrimination in any one of the presentations. The justification of what Newsday found, I have to leave up to them, their individual responses as to why what came out, came out. And, but I don't, I don't see, honestly, I'm not speaking to the, you've asked...
We have one other senator who needs to ask questions. Uh, Senator Thomas, you can come back for a second round. Uh, but Senator Kaplan, if, uh, if you can proceed.
Hello. I wanted, again, thank you for appearing here today and giving us your testimony. Mr. Moshe, um, I was so glad to hear that you're committed to rooting out the unconscious bias and racism. So tell me about the implicit bias training program you and your agents are going through right now.
Um, we, we have a staff that is strictly dedicated to a training. And, you know, I think recently, when this, the, the, the whole arena of this country has been exposed to discrimination, okay? It has brought, brought on a new level of where discrimination comes from. And a lot of times discrimination comes from our upbringing, our parents, our grandparents. And it is, I'm, I'm going to say almost unconscious, unconscious behavior.
That's exactly what we said, and I appreciate that.
And, and we, we...
That you have, hopefully have come up with. Have you come up with any new training?
Yes, that is the training, that is the training that we give. We, we, we're not, we just don't talk about discrimination, but we talk about what may come out of your mouth without really thinking about it. And to think about it before time because of those, that subconscious behavior that, that has been for hundreds of years ingrained in us. And we're very, very stringent on that.
And this is new or is this something that you...
Well, I, relatively, relatively new is the, is the aspect of, of unconscious behavior, yes.
Okay. Today I plan to...
In light, in light of the investigation and in light of the Newsday article, it has been, is, it has been enhanced. And, and truthfully, I think not just in the real estate industry, but I think the behavior, the, the, um, the unbiased behavior and the unconscious behavior should be spoken about more across the country.
Yes. So today I plan on introducing legislation mandating implicit bias training for all realtors, both pre-licensed and in continuing education. Can I count on your support of this legislation in order to address the glaring problems that have been revealed in this hearing today?
Absolutely.
And do we need to add hours of training for this?
Uh, I believe yes. I, absolutely. I think in any type of discrimination training, uh, there should be that type of training as well, for sure.
Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Thank you, Senator. Uh, we will return to Senator Kavanaugh.
Great, thank you, Senator Scoofus. Uh, so just to continue, uh, conversation with, uh, Ms. Giordano, um, you know, you had asked us to talk about the particulars. Uh, so, uh, I'm gonna just do a little bit of that here before we move on to the next panel. So you...
First, Senator Kaplan, if you can mute yourself, thank you.
Thank you, Senator Scoofus. Um, so, Ms. Giordano, during the investigation, you met with, uh, a white, non-Hispanic tester and another tester is Hispanic. And you gave the not, the white, non-Hispanic tester 152 listings and the Hispanic tester only 74. Do you know which of the, uh, incidents where the pairs were referring to?
I didn't give any of the testers any listings. The algorithm was put into the computer. The computer spits out the listings. So I didn't send a single listing to either of the testers. I cannot represent the time five years ago as to what or what was on the market at that time to prompt the initial conversation. But if you listen to the initial conversation, you will hear the towns that they spoke about and those towns were sent over.
Okay, and I assume you, you, you've had opportunity to review the, the, at least the material that was published by Newsday?
Newsday has never sent me a single document with re- with regards to any of the properties I sent. And additionally, I will state that they have not sent me all of the recordings in order to answer the questions that you're posing against me today. I can't answer without all of the evidence and they have not provided me with all of it.
Ms. Giordano, I understand you feel that you're working with incomplete...
That's the truth, sir. That's not feeling...
I understand that you're, you feel you're working with complete informa- incomplete information, but I'm just gonna, you know, I'm gonna, you, you asked to talk about a few of the incidents, so we're gonna talk about that.
Absolutely. We can't talk about them in their entirety without all of the information. We can understand that, correct, sir?
We always, we always work with the information that we have.
Right, but we weren't given all the information.
Right.
Uh, okay.
So, after the Hispanic tester explicitly stated that the distance from New York City was not, uh, relevant to her, uh, you said that, quote, "You wanted to bring her, you did not want to bring her any further out east." And instead, you wanted to keep her around, uh, Brentwood and Bay Shore.
That's correct, correct. Those are the words used in the video, sir. But the actual property addresses, as you can clearly see, did not represent that.
Ms. Giordano, you have to let Senator Kavanaugh, please, get through his thought before responding.
I'm sorry, I thought he was done. I'm sorry, I thought he was done.
That's okay. So you're, you're saying that the addresses that, so again, that, that the assertion, the assertion that has been presented to us that you presented 27 listings to the Hispanic tester, uh, in Brentwood and Bay Shore and none, uh, to the non-Hispanic homebuyer. And again, each of them asserted that the distance east or west was not, uh, relevant to them. Do you have a, looking at what you, you know, recognizing this was a while back, could you explain, uh, the different, uh...
How can I expla- uh, I'm sorry, are you finished, sir?
Yeah, the different, yeah.
How can I explain when I have not been presented all of the information, nor have you? How can I explain something that you and I don't have all the information for? So I will say this to you. I cannot... I cannot tell you, both of these testers, white and Hispanic, were given an app to change the criteria. As you can see in many of my, in my written testimony and in the video testimony, and additionally, in Newsday's testimony, stated that I gave them an app to change the criteria at any time during the entire process, okay?
And in your practice, in your practice, you don't put any of the inputs into that app?
Absolutely put the inputs into the app on the first meeting and explain that they can change it at any time. Additionally, they can see all the information that I see. Additionally, they can see the school reports. Additionally, they can see everything that they want to see. They can change it at any time. I ask you, where are the listing reports? Who handled, handling those, those listings? Who brought them in? How do you know that it wasn't changed through the app? I give, I gave both the testers, as you can see in my video, the application to change the search criteria at any moment. I do not know if they changed the site, search criteria. I do not have evidence of the listings that were provided. I only have a map that generally states where I sent criteria in two different market conditions, one in the winter, one in the spring, when we all know as real estate professionals that there is a flux of inventory between those times. So I say to you, sir, show me where I steered this particular Hispanic buyer. Show me the video of the house that I took her to in Ronkonkoma. Show me the video of the house that she went to in Holbrook. Show me where I steered these people.
So we do, we do have a limited time and I.
I, I know you have a limited time, but you want to have a limited time when I have to explain. I've only had two minutes to explain to the Senate, which I'm a privilege to be in front of.
I'm gonna ask you another question. I'm gonna ask you another question, perhaps at the indulgence chairs, you'll have another minute. I, if, if lots of paired testers go to lots of.
Can't answer what paired testers do, sir. That's not a fair question.
Ms. Giordano, you really have to give the courtesy to my colleagues of letting them finish their questions.
Right. If, if, if a paired testing program like what Newsday did, or like what we're contemplating having government entities contract with nonprofits to do, send lots of paired testers that are similarly situated, that have similar economic needs and state their housing preferences similarly, and non-Hispanic home buyers are generally directed to predominantly minority neighborhoods. And I mean, just, I recognize that you're asserting that that's not something you were involved in, but you are a professional in this industry. If, in general, non-Hispanic, white home buyers are directed to different neighborhoods, whether it be by an app or that with input from the salespeople, or through directly, you know, through the salespeople directly bringing them to homes. If, 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 if people are treated differently based on their race or ethnicity in the outcomes, in the neighborhoods they're shown, in the listings they're shown, is that, is that a problem? Would you count that as discrimination? And in your understanding, would that be a violation of the fair housing laws?
Are you asking me to speculate on all of my colleagues?
No, I'm asking you, your understanding of whether home buyers who are directed to different neighborhoods.
I've never directed anybody to a different neighborhood, sir.
Asking you, your understanding of what the law requires. Do you believe that if Hispanic home buyers are generally directed to predominantly minority neighborhoods and white, non-Hispanic home buyers are generally directed to neighborhoods that are a greater percentage white, that that would, that would, without, without us getting into why they did that, would you, would you agree that that constitutes a violation of our fair housing laws?
Generally speaking, in your general overtones, I will genuinely see or generally state that people should not be discriminated based upon their, their race, their sex, their sexual orientation, and on and on with regards to our fair housing laws. I am in agreement with you, sir. If somebody should have been discriminating, discriminated against, there should be some, I guess what you're asking me, some sort of repercussion to that. I am, again, emphatically stating that I have never participated in any of this, and you're asking me for a general statement, which I'm not educated to give you for everyone. I, I'm just myself.
Okay. Again, I just, I appreciate, and I'll end there. And I just would note that the, the question of what brokers are educated to understand and what their understanding of these laws.
I understand very clearly, sir.
Is relevant to our proceedings today, but that, but thank you.
Senator Kavanaugh, I understand completely that every agency should take fair housing very seriously. In addition to that, under my time with Mr. Moshe, he took these things very seriously.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Not seeing any other senators with questions, I want to thank the panel for your participation and your testimony, and we'll now move on. Thank you very much.
Hold on one second. I can't get.
Senators? I invite any of you to call me directly. Thank you.
Again, thanks very much for your participation. Okay, we're going to move on, but first a couple of notes here, since we will be moving a little bit out of order. I, the next panel on the witness list, the fourth panel, will be joining us, but there, one of the witnesses is not quite available until a little bit later this afternoon. And so we will circle back to the fourth panel. The fifth panel, you know, I had, I referenced in my opening remarks that there were a handful of witnesses who were ignoring or defying our legislative subpoenas. And that was in reference to this fifth panel at the start of this morning. They had not committed to participate. That recalcitrance has continued to this very moment. Our legal counsel has attempted and re-attempted to get them to come and participate today without success. And so at 1:30 today, our counsel is going to be before a Supreme Court judge looking to enforce our subpoenas. We'll take additional steps after that if necessary. But in the meantime, the fifth panel continues to be absent. And so, given that, we'll actually now move to the sixth panel, which is a number of folks from Keller Williams and Remax, primarily Remax, one individual from Keller Williams. And those four are Alan Eldridge, Joy Tuckson, Christopher Hubbard, and Rosemary Morando.
Senator, we're having trouble reaching Rosemary Morando. We will keep attempting that and keep you updated.
Okay. Very good. In the meantime, I see Mr. Eldridge has joined us. And we're waiting on Ms. Tuckson and Mr. Hubbard.
She's with, she's next to me.
Oh, okay. Very good. And I see Mr. Hubbard has joined us as well. And so the, the three of you will get started with you all. If you could please first raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you'll tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Very good. Thank you. I will start with opening remarks. Mr. Eldridge, do you have anything to begin?
I do.
Okay.
I'm gonna read them. I am the founder of, sorry, I'm the broker of Remax Beyond. My office is in Melville. My office has produced documents to the committee in response to your subpoenas, and I'm here today to answer your questions. Under state law, real estate agents are required to undergo training to maintain their license status. Furthermore, agents must follow the National Association of Realtors Code of Ethics and comply with local, state, and federal law. Remax Beyond holds monthly office meetings where new topics are discussed, such as recent changes in law. Topics discussed are informative and assist the agents in furthering their careers. The topics include market conditions, new technology, and new rules and regulations in the real estate industry. Fair housing issues will also be a topic for discussion. Handouts are prepared for any agent who misses the meeting so they can stay informed and know up to date on new developments. Since the New Day article was published, I have had discussions with staff to outline their responsibilities. Also, there is an opportunity for new agents to gain experience by shadowing an agent in the field. With brand-new agents, I have spent a considerable amount of time ensuring they are aware of their responsibilities with regard to agency and fair housing law. New agents must learn how to practice in the field, and spending time with experienced agents helps to further that goal. Remax also has policies in place to assist agents with any questions they may have regarding fair housing. Remax agents have also been encouraged to call, text, or walk into my office with any questions they may have. I have an open-door policy for any questions or concerns, and I will reach out, sorry, I'm sorry, I have an open-door policy for any questions or concerns, and if I don't know the answer, I will reach out to the Long Island Board of Realtors for clarification. Joy Tuckson has been an agent associated with Remax Beyond since 2011. I know Joy to be extremely diligent in following the rules and conscientious when dealing with clients. As such, I have had no issues with Joy since her time at Remax Beyond and know her to be a valuable member of the office. I have reviewed the tape, associated with the Newsday article, and for the most part, believe Joy acted with professionalism. I understand how some of the statements could have been taken differently than what was intended, and as, as Joy could have chosen her words more carefully. However, I feel strongly that that was not her intention or the outcome she desired. I have had conversations with Joy about her statements, and am confident that her intent was not to discriminate or disparage any race, nor did she intend to steer either of the testers. In fact, the Newsday article clearly shows a listing sent to both testers overlap in the same neighborhood and in the same school district. Indeed, since the Newsday article was published, Joy has, excuse me, obsessively followed the law and even sought out, sought out more effective training in order to make sure she's complying with the law. My office takes the allegations in the Newsday article and any, and any allegations of discrimination very seriously, and we will do everything within our power to assure compliance moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do you have anything to add? I know you're together there, Ms. Tuckson, do you have anything?
Well, I have an opening statement.
Yes, that's what I mean. Please, go ahead.
I've been a real estate agent in New York starting in 19, since 1972. I briefly left the state in 1980. I went to another state where I became a licensed agent and then a licensed broker. I returned to New York State in 1985, obtained my salesman's license, and then my broker's license. I've been at Remax for a total of 25 years, and since 2011, as Alan had stated, I've been with Remax Beyond. In my over 40 years of experience as a real estate broker and agent, I have never once received a complaint for discrimination or violations of federal fair housing law. I practice with the utmost respect and professionalism that the real estate industry deserves. I follow the law extremely carefully and ensure that I'm up to date on all regulations and changes to the law. I'm constantly seeking out new changes to the law to make sure that I am in compliance with all recent fair housing and non-discrimination laws. I also make sure to fulfill the necessary requirements for my license to remain active and in good standing with the Department of State and Division of Licensing. I am up to date on all training and educational requirements as required by to be an associate real estate broker in New York. Furthermore, I believe my conduct and actions support my position that I treat clients with the respect and professionalism they deserve. I have never used ethnic backgrounds or race to steer any of my clients away from towns or areas. I informed both of the testers to conduct their own research online. Furthermore, there is a direct quote in the Newsday article which states I proved, I provided comparable listings to both testers. The experts cited in the Newsday article agreed with this assertion. I have learned a great deal from this experience and will take the lessons learned with me as I continue in my profession as a licensed real estate associate broker. As a result of this investigation, I sought out a course, which, from a new instructor hired by my board, Sharon Mullen, who works for Fair Housing on Long Island. I took her course, and she was very clear presenting the course, going through how fair housing arrived year after year after year, which I lived through personally. And she made it very crystal clear that we were only allowed to speak about the house, very clear. I now only discuss the property itself, and if asked about any other strenuous factors, I reply that fair housing laws prohibit my from commenting on that topic. I take my position as a real estate agent for over 40 years very seriously and will continue to serve my community with utmost respect and professionalism it deserves.
Thank you very much. I, I know that we've been, I think we've been joined by Ms. Morando. I see you there. Thanks for getting onto this Zoom. If, if I may, before we move on, we swore each of the rest of the witnesses under oath. If you can please raise your right hand for me. Do you solemnly swear that you'll tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I will now move to Mr. Hubbard.
Yes.
Do you have any opening remarks?
I do. I just want to thank everyone for being here today and for holding this hearing in order to address what is a very serious topic. I am here in my capacity as a broker to do my best to answer your questions regarding the Newsday article and my profession more generally. It has all, already been a long day, I think, for, you know, many of us, and there is a lot more to go. So I do want to be brief. I do want to take a moment to address the allegations in the Newsday article. First, I do note, and I want to note that I share my concerns raised by my colleagues regarding the methodology Newsday used in conducting its investigation. For example, Newsday admits that while it obtained expert opinions, those experts' opinions were based only on portions of broker interactions with testers. We do not know specifically which clips Newsday shared with these experts. Additionally, the investigation was imprecise. Newsday drew conclusions from only two testers in interactions with me, the smallest possible sample size. Each tester provided a different background that influenced the recommendations I provided. Leaving aside the serious concerns I have over Newsday's methodology, I do want to address the allegations against me. I categorically deny engaging in, in any evidence of steering and note that in my 17-plus years of work in this field, I have never treated clients differently based on race, gender, ethnicity, sexual, sexual orientation, or any others such characteristic. First, you know, in my circumstances, Newsday alleges I have inconsistent statements regarding the quality of certain neighborhoods to each tester. You know, I believe based on my review of the conversations with the testers, it shows that my description of the neighborhoods were consistent to, to both testers in those conversations, in those consultations. Similarly, Newsday alleges that I provided inconsistent properties to the testers. But again, within review of my case, that, that is not true neither. I am here to, you know, help in this serious circumstance and review. So whatever questions you have, I am here to, you know, provide whatever information I can. And I do just want to make a note that each office, each Remax office is independently owned and operated, and I, you know, I'm not aware of any other agents, Remax agent or any other agent's circumstances or their specific circumstances with the Newsday article.
Thank you for those remarks, Ms. Morando. Do you have any opening statement?
Good day, senators. My name is Rosemary Morando, and I am a real estate salesperson with Coldwell Bank of Realty. I'm here today because you have asked me. I'm here today because you have asked me to testify in relation with the November 2019 Newsday report. Let me start by telling you a little bit about myself. I've been working as a real estate salesperson for over nine years. I am a single mother, and my children have all attended schools on Long Island. I absolutely love my job, which has helped me financially support my family. I've been humbled and blessed to assist many families make Long Island their home. I am also a Christian woman, and I respect all people. I believe that we are all created in God's likeness and image, and we have all been created for His purpose and plan. These last few months have been, for me, the most difficult of my life. The Newsday report inaccurately and unfairly accused me of providing unequal treatment to undercover testers sent to me in 2016. As a result of these allegations and publication of my personal information, I've been threatened, ostracized, and harassed. My reputation in the community and professionally has been destroyed. In addition to the industry-wide damage caused by the COVID pandemic, my health and my career have been significantly damaged as a result of my cooperation with multiple agencies. To be clear, I have never had a single complaint filed against me from any client or previous client in my entire career. I have been compliant with all continuing education requirements. You have seen the content selected by Newsday for publication, so I'd like to take an opportunity to provide additional information that Newsday omitted or that you may not be aware of. For example, despite the Newsday report making me the focus of an article titled, they call it "steering," Newsday dedicated a single sentence to truth, which read, "She gave both testers comparable listings in similar areas, showing no evidence of steering." The fact that I provided Mr. Toon information for a listing around the corner from my home and toward properties in my neighborhood, and also the fact that I needed to stop all communications with Mr. Samuel after he left me aggressive messages. I was first contacted by Mr. Samuel's in May of 2016. Mr. Samuel's told me that he would meet me at my office with his wife, but he showed up alone for our appointment, as reflected in the report. My meeting with Mr. Samuel's lasted only 26 minutes, during which time he told me that he was looking for a house for him, his wife, and their son within 30 minutes of Mather Hospital, where his wife worked, for the budget of $500,000. I provided information about the areas requested by Mr. Samuel, who also expressed a concern about living near college students, especially considering the proximity to the local university. Because of his concern about the neighborhood, I suggested that he visit areas at different various times of day, and that he speak with residents and get a feel for the community and the quality of the schools. What Newsday does not reflect is that when Mr. Samuel's arrived for his second visit, he did so without his wife again. I initially followed up with him, but stopped corresponding with him when I began to feel very uncomfortable. Specifically, Mr. Samuel's became aggressive, leaving me aggressive messages, at which point I stopped all communications with him. In October of 2016, a total of 139 days after the meeting with Mr. Samuel's, I met the second tester sent by Newsday, Mr. Toon, and he told me he was looking for a home within 30 minutes of a rehabilitation center in Edgewater, where his mother was living. As reflected in the video, Mr. Toon spent an hour and 13 minutes in my office. Similar to my initial discussion with Mr. Samuel's, I provided extensive information about the home-buying process and provided a referral for a mortgage broker.
Ms. Morando, if you can just wrap up in the next 20 seconds or so, your time is up.
I fully understand why the comments selected by Newsday report video clips may be hurtful to some. I understand that a home is the largest purchase most people will ever make in their lives, and my goal has always been to ensure every client is ultimately happy with their purchase. That I have been able to make a living in the industry, and my prior clients have been very satisfied with my level of service that I have provided and therefore have referred me to their family and their friends. Thank you for taking time to listen to a snapshot of my story.
Thank you very much for your participation and your testimony. I'll get started with questions, and I'll begin with Mr. Eldridge, if I may. I just want to confirm, based on your written testimony, it appears that in the aftermath of Newsday's investigation, there has been no disciplinary proceedings within your brokerage. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Can you explain to me, how long have you been a broker? Why don't I start there? How many years?
Approximately 15 years.
15 years. In your 15 years, have you had to, or have you fired anybody, not related to sales and sales numbers, but have you fired anybody for violations of the law or unscrupulous behavior?
Yes, I have.
You have? Okay. So if I may ask our folks in the back end here, if you can please play the clip associated with Joy Tuckson. I would like to play that and then follow up with a question or two.
Do you really want your future children going to Avenueville School District? Again, I'm not allowed to steer you, but you go on, and I'm not going to send you anything you wanted, unless you don't want to store your car to buy your crack, unless you just want to walk up the street.
So, Mr. Eldridge, you commented that you felt that Ms. Tuckson, I think the words were, mostly acted with professionalism. I think anyone who is objective and looking at or listening to that clip, where Ms. Tuckson is quoted as saying, basically, "Stay away from Wyandanch unless you want to start your car to buy your crack." What would she have had to have said in addition to that for it to have crossed the line for you? Would she have had to explicitly say, "Well, you're white, so unless you want to start your car to buy your crack, you should stay away from there"? What else would she have had to have said for you to have taken disciplinary action?
Well, Senator, first, you've taken a 30-second clip out of a 45-minute discussion, and if you were listening or if you showed the entire piece, you would have understood that there was some background regarding the discussion with the individual that Joy Tuckson was talking to, and there was concerns about crime. In fact, Newsday itself had had articles appearing at that time all over the front page about issues in Wyandanch. So I think that was the crux of the comment.
So you don't have any issue with what we just heard?
If you take it at a context, the way you said it, and that was the end of it, yes, I would have. But again, I think when you take it into the entire discussion that was had, and again, if you looked at, if you listened to the additional 45-plus minutes of the discussion, in general, I didn't have a problem that rose to the level where I would take action in, with Ms. Tuckson. So that's why, that was the reason for my comments before.
So crime came up in a conversation, and then that comment was made, quite frankly, even with that context. That sort of messaging is abhorrent, I think most people would agree, and no doubt is steering that white tester in a way that the message was not relayed to the minority tester. Am I characterizing that unfairly somehow?
No. Again, I think if you take the 30 or 40 seconds that you played at a context, it certainly appears that way.
Do you believe that comment, even with your context, is appropriate? Or, I mean, that is an abhorrent statement, and quite frankly, I think most people would agree, a violation of fair housing laws. Do you disagree that that is a wildly inappropriate comment?
Again, based upon the 30 or 40 seconds, I do.
That is astonishing to me. My time is up. I'll move over to Senator Kavanaugh.
Great, thank you, Senator Scoop. I'd like to note that we've been joined by Senator Rivera, and I don't know if we've mentioned Senator Comrie already, but he's also joined us. So, Mr. Eldridge, you mentioned in your opening remarks that it was important to you that Ms. Tuckson did not intend to discriminate or steer. Do you believe intent is required for conduct to be discriminatory?
I'm sorry, Senator, could you repeat the last part of your question?
Do you believe that it is necessary, that intent is required for conduct to be discriminatory?
Under the law, no. Absolutely not.
Under your view of your use of the word discriminatory?
No.
Okay. And presumably, just to follow up, you also believe that intended discrimination is not required to demonstrate a violation of the fair housing laws?
That's correct.
Okay. I want to ask Ms. Tuckson, what is your understanding of what it means to, quote, "steer" a potential homebuyer?
I don't steer, so I -- to tell where they should live, would that be?
Okay, so you think if you are telling somebody where they should go, if you're encouraging them to live in one neighborhood, if you're discouraging them from living in a certain neighborhood, is that what you consider steering?
Yes.
Okay. And in your understanding, that's not legal?
Yes.
Okay. So the comment that Senator Scoop has showed you, what do you think the effect is of telling somebody that in a given community, if you live there, you can buy crack within walking distance?
What do I think, one?
What do you think the effect is on that potential homebuyer's interest in living in that community?
You're talking about the comment that I made to the white tester?
Yeah, saying that if you live in that community, you won't need to start your car to buy crack.
The white tester told me that her and her husband both lived in apartments in Queens. They lived in an apartment in Queens. They both grew up in apartments in this city. They had no knowledge whatsoever of Long Island. They didn't know any of the towns. They had no relatives who lived on Long Island. They had no friends who lived on Long Island. The woman was very concerned and nervous about that fact. And at the time, that particular year, and in that timeframe, Newsday had on the front page about drug busts, about crack busts. There was a lot of crime, a lot of drugs, and it was continually in the news. And I assumed that she was concerned with that, and that was her distress.
Okay. And you think that's a sort of accurate, measured way of describing the situation, that you can, you know, one thing you can be sure of living there is that you'll be able to buy crack within walking distance?
According to Newsday, yes.
Okay, and I assume Newsday didn't quite characterize it that way. Do you think that providing that information to white homebuyers should be of concern if we're concerned, to us, if we're concerned about enforcing fair housing laws?
The words I used were unfortunate. I shouldn't have said what I said. I've since taken a course that the Board of Realtors, I belong to the multiple listing, and their instructors had taught previously that anything that affected the price of a house, you could talk about. Since then, I took this course with Sharon Mullen. She was very clear. She works with Long Island Housing. I know now I'm only allowed to speak about the house.
Okay. And you think, so you think the effect of those comments and your intent was to discourage them from living in that area?
No, absolutely not.
What was your intent, if not to discourage them from living in that area?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
What was your intent of pointing out the availability of crack, if it was not to discourage them from living there?
To calm her down, and I wasn't, I was going to find her a home. People hire me to sell their homes or to find them a home, and that's what I do, and they have to feel comfortable with me.
Okay. And again, but your intent, when you said that you can buy crack within walking distance, you're telling us today that that was not, you didn't think that would either encourage or discourage them from living there? That was just a fact, sort of like, you know, it's a sunny day, or the houses are blue?
What I did was, she asked for houses in Bethpage, within 30 miles of Bethpage. I sent her houses in Bethpage. The two testers, the one white and the one Asian, I sent one six houses, one seven houses. When we went into Newsday to first review the tapes before the article was published, Mr. Herbert turned the laptop around, and he showed us a map interlacing the homes that I sent. They were all in the Bethpage, which both buyers had asked for. One of the houses was the same house.
Okay, I'm just, my time is up. I'm going to leave it there. I'll just say, like, it seems perplexing to say that those words are unfortunately chosen, but that somehow their intent was not to discourage the person to whom you were saying them from considering living in that community. But I'll leave out my time.
Okay. Thank you, Senator Kavanaugh. I know that, oh, Senator Thomas, you are back. Do you have any questions?
I just have a few for Mr. Eldridge. There seems to be a deep misunderstanding, not only on the part of the agents, but among brokers too, that fair housing laws don't apply if the agent did not intend to discriminate. Where do you think this intent standard originated?
Well, I think, first of all, that the past training that we've had in this area is woefully inadequate. I mean, we have to take three, I think it's three hours of fair housing every two years. I've had agents, you know, 10 years, they take the same course every two years. So, I mean, they've had 15 hours of fair housing, but they've heard the same thing over and over and over, and it goes back to citing, you know, when the first law was enacted back in 1867, and the next law was enacted in 1879, and then 1912, rather than really getting into the crux of the issues. And, you know, after this came out, I went back to National Association of Realtors and looked in and pulled out videos that you were able to provide to brokers so that they could, and we had actors, you know, and these actors would portray a scenario where discrimination was occurring. And the agents in my office, seeing this all of a sudden, and it's, you know, the nuances of it, all of a sudden, they got to, you know, you get a new understanding, and so for me, that was very enlightening, and I think that helps to overcome. And so for me, that was very enlightening, and I think that helps to overcome this specific issue where, you know, as you said, you know...
So you're trying to correct the problem, basically?
Well, absolutely.
Okay. Let me go to the next question, then. Ms. Tuckson stated today that she obtained the statistic on drug prevalence from Newsday. Mr. Hubbard got livability statistics from areavibe.com. Does Remax dot encourage its agents to get crime or school statistics from legitimate government sources? Why are agents using unreliable or potentially biased sources as a basis for their information?
I can't, I can't comment on Mr. Hubbard because he's, you know, he's in a different office, so I'm not sure what he was doing. But I can tell you, what we do is we encourage agents to tell their clients, their customers, the consumer, to go out and do their own research. We really don't want them going to a specific site. The Newsday used to provide sites. I mean, there are so many different places you can go to, to find information. And the problem you have is, you know, is if you point out one and they're wrong, then you're off. So what we do is we go out in those instances and say, there's plenty of information on the web, there's plenty of, you know, places you can go and find information, do your own research.
But again, what we saw on video just recently showed that an agent was giving information rather than telling a customer to do their own research. What do you have to say about that?
I think that's wrong. I think you should be encouraging agents to tell their customers to go out and do their own research.
All right. I don't have any more questions.
Okay, thank you, Senator Thomas. I'll take a moment, if I may, to follow up with Ms. Tuckson. Have you ever made a comment like the one we heard in that clip before? Or was that the only time you've ever made a comment like that? That can very easily, to 99% of people, be construed as, you know, very negative and broad rush towards an entire community, derogatory towards an entire community? Is that, have you ever made that kind of a comment before?
It was a very flippant comment that I shouldn't have made, and yes, I probably have. And it was not directed at a community. It clearly states in the article that I informed both buyers that they should do their own research. I told them I'm not allowed to steer, and that they need to do their own research and tell me what they want.
Okay, thank you. Now, you've talked about, and Mr. Eldridge has talked about, additional training that you've received since this all came to light. Do you think, if you can sort of step outside of your shoes for a moment and look at what's going on from the outside, do you think that you, you know, objectively speaking, that you would have learned a lesson from this new training without this Newsday expose and this video have, you know, having come out? Or, you know, is this a matter of like, you know, having, hate to phrase this way, but having gotten caught and now being very much aware of it, and I can't be caught doing that again? Or do you think this training actually, if it's someone else, someone who wasn't caught by Newsday, in your brokerage, Mr. Eldridge, different agent, who wasn't caught, but was doing, you know, making similar quote-unquote flippant remarks, do you think this new training is actually getting them to stop?
I think, as Mr. Eldridge stated, we were being taught by multiple listing. After this, I can't really answer that question. After this article came out, multiple listing fired the instructors, they fired the two attorneys, and they brought in this new woman and other people who are teaching us differently. So I don't know.
So I guess, Mr. Eldridge, do you have a very high level of confidence that this new training is going to ensure that this, these types of comments are not made moving forward?
I can't, I can't give you a definitive answer. I think it will definitely help. I think changing the training, again, to, you know, to promote real situations as opposed to historical, what happened when, I think will help significantly. You know, when you, when you look at something and you can, as I said, if you're looking at a video and you can see something happening through your eyes, even though it may be, you know, a performance, it still makes you, I think, significantly more aware of what can happen or what has happened, as opposed to the way our training had been prepared in the past. So yes, I do think it will help.
Do you think we need more testing in the industry?
I think it's, absolutely. I mean, everyone, you know, if you didn't have traffic lights, you didn't have people giving tickets for traffic lights, we'd all be going through traffic lights. So I think there should be more testing.
Is there anything that you can do, do you think, as a broker? Now, you know, it's been mentioned, not just on this panel, but many of the previous panels today, that, you know, people claiming, well, I've never had a complaint lodged against me, so, you know, this is an outrageous allegation. I mentioned previously, you know, it's incredibly difficult, if not impossible, for someone to know to lodge a complaint for being treated inappropriately or inconsistently, because they don't know how other people were treated by that agent. You have to know that someone else was treated better, or know that someone else was treated consistently, to realize, oh, I was mistreated, I was treated inconsistently. And of course, people have no idea how the next guy was treated by the agent, and so of course, they don't know to file a complaint. What more can you do? So testing, I think, is really crucial here, but what more can you do as a broker to ensure that, you know, knowing that complaints only materialize if you have some magic ball and know how others are treated, what more can you do as a broker to ensure that your agents are not behaving like what we're talking about?
I think you have to continuously bring it to their attention. It's not something, you know, we talk about it once and then you forget about it, you have to, you know, you talk about it. As I said, I hold monthly meetings, so, you know, every time you have a meeting, it should come up, and there should be a discussion. You know, if my agents aren't at a meeting, when I send them information, I have them sign off that they've read this, and they understand it, and they email it back to me. So I'm gonna make certain that I cover everyone in the office. But I think you have to do it continuously, that's all.
Okay, just one last question, yes or no? Have you ever fired someone over your 15 years as a broker for violating fair housing laws?
No.
Okay, thank you, Senator Kavanaugh.
Am I up, Senator Skupas?
Yes, yes.
Okay, great, thank you very much. So, Ms. Morando, I just have a couple of questions for you. You met during the course of the investigation with a white homebuyer and a black homebuyer, both of whom were looking for a house within 30 minutes of Port Jefferson for up to $500,000. We're gonna show a clip. Here's what you said to the white homebuyer. Let me roll that clip.
But like I said, it's okay, I just, you know, you don't really know in certain areas what you're gonna get next door.
Right.
That's the problem in those pockets of Port Jeff too, that, you know, down by the train, there's like any area there. What I say is always to women, follow the school bus, you know, that's what I always say, follow the school bus, see the moms that are hanging out on the corners, wherever you're going to buy diapers, you know, during the day, go at 10 o'clock at night, and you see if you like the, I mean, really, that's the way they really take a look at it. I tell women this all the time.
Right.
There was one fellow who, like, insisted on this house, and the wife was pregnant and had a little one, and I said to him, I can't say anything, but I encourage you, I want you to go there at 10 o'clock at night with your wife to buy diapers. Go to that 7-Eleven. They didn't buy there.
No, that's great.
I have to say it without saying it, you know, you have the knowledge of the areas and that.
Yes.
And, look, I care for families, I'm a family person.
Right.
I care for my children, and, you know, when you're putting them in other people's care, I take first-time homebuyers out all the time. I don't wanna use the word steer, but I try to edge, I use that word.
No, absolutely. That's...
So, Ms. Morando, let me begin by asking you, what did you specifically think that the white homebuyer and his partner would observe about the mothers who were waiting for the school bus that would be relevant to their choice of housing?
Well, they were transitioning here to Long Island, and the moms at the school bus are just a great resource of information.
Okay, and you, so you were, but you said they should follow the school bus and look at the moms. You're suggesting that the idea was...
No, I didn't say look at the moms, I said see the moms.
Right.
And can you get out and...
See them as they follow the school bus. What was it that they were supposed to see?
Well, following the school bus was just referencing that they would get to know the route, and how long that the son would be on the bus, because I believe he was coming out with the son. And if you're following the school bus, you'll get a better idea of how long the children will be on the bus, how many stops to the bus, to the school.
Why would you, why would you, why would you look at the moms along the way?
I said, see the moms hanging out in the corners, you can get out and talk to them, because they're a great resource.
I think you said you'd see who's hanging out at 10 o'clock. I think you said that they should follow, that, we can run it again if you want, but I think you said you should follow the school bus and look at the moms along the route. Again, it's hard to, it's hard to hear that any other way than there may be some kinds of people that you can observe that are the kinds of people you wanna live with, and other kinds of people that you can observe by passing them by at the school bus stop that you don't wanna live.
Absolutely not.
Okay, you said, you said you don't wanna use the word steer. Why didn't you wanna use that word?
I shouldn't have used that word. I know that I don't steer my clients, ever, and he, we were talking in the context of, he was speaking about the university, or not wanting to live near the college kids. So that's why I referenced, well, you know, to go down to a local store at 10:00, 10:30 at night, or wherever you're gonna go and run an errand. And when you're going at 10:30, 11 o'clock at night, and you're near a university, if it is a college town, and he was specific that that's, he did not want a college town, well, then maybe that's not where they wanted to live.
Do you think saying, do you think saying the word steer or not saying the word steer is relevant to whether you're violating the law?
I should have not used the word steer.
Okay, but do you think that, that's probably correct, but do you think that whether you use the word or not use the word is relevant to the question of whether you're violating the fair housing laws?
I know I shouldn't have used the word, and I don't think, I didn't violate any laws, because I was being clear with both my testers that I do not steer, and I wanted them to understand that. But if you do have some information, and they're asking you a question about a community offering the information, it's not steering, it's helping the buyer make an informed decision.
Why did you say, why did you say you need to say it without saying it?
I'm sorry, say that again?
You said in the clip we just watched that you need to, I need to say it without saying it, is what you said.
Right.
What does that mean?
Well, buying a house is, you know, probably the biggest purchase that a buyer is going to make, and I want them to make an informed decision. I cannot say it, I do not steer, and perhaps they could use other resources to help them make that decision.
Isn't saying it without saying it, isn't it a violation of the law if you impart information implicitly? If you use coded language, if you, I mean, saying it without saying it almost seems like a textbook definition of what we sometimes call coded language for certain realities and communities.
I did not use any coded language to help make up any composition of any neighborhood. I didn't.
What did you mean by saying it without saying it?
I believe I was speaking with, I guess it was Mr. Samuels with that, and I cannot steer, I will not steer, and I let him know that, I guess, we were talking about the 7-Eleven, or where he can go make some errands and just get a better idea for the community.
Turning to Mr. Eldridge, as somebody with a leadership position in this firm, do you believe that brokers, quote, saying it without saying it is appropriate? Is it legal?
I'm sorry, Senator?
Do you believe, as somebody with a leadership position in this organization, that your broker should be telling potential homebuyers that they need to say it without saying it?
Well, I'm not part of her organization, Senator.
Oh, sorry, forgive me. Sorry, our panels have mostly, let me ask you, as leadership, I forgot Ms. Morando was originally gonna be on a different panel. As, do you, having just seen that material today, and recognizing that you may not have the full context, and maybe not had an opportunity to speak with Ms. Morando about it previously, but do you believe that a broker mentioning that they shouldn't steer people, and saying that out loud, that I can't say steer, and I don't like to use that word, is that, is that a practice that you think is appropriate?
Senator, it's a hard question for me to answer without having any background. I mean, I wouldn't say to someone that I can't say, I can't talk to you about this 'cause it's steering, but I'm gonna talk to you anyway. So I'm not certain of her circumstances, so it's a tough question to answer for me.
Okay, again, our time's up.
All I can say is, I wouldn't steer anyone. And if you're talking about steering, you're doing steering, no, you shouldn't be doing that.
You shouldn't be mentioning steering and mentioning that you can't do it, that you don't like to call it that, anything you're doing. Is that a fair statement?
Again, Senator, I wouldn't go beyond saying we don't, I wouldn't talk about steering, and I wouldn't advise my agents to tell people, you know, to talk about steering. So I don't know her circumstances.
Okay. Let me just conclude there, but again, I think that if I were in a family, and I were told that one of the things that people should do before they decide whether to move to my community is follow the school bus and look at the mothers of our families, you know, I think it'd be hard to interpret that as anything other than an insult to that community. But I'll leave it there.
Great. Thank you, Senator Kavanaugh. I think that concludes our questions. So I wanna thank each of you on the panel for coming and participating, answering our questions in a forthright manner. I appreciate it, and wish you all a good rest of the day.
You're welcome.
Next up, so we will return to Panel Four, which I'm told is now available. So these are a couple of fair housing experts that we're looking to hear from, the first of which is Dr. Jacob Farber, and the second of which is Dr. Max Besperus.
So, Senator, I'm gonna be speaking on behalf of both myself and Dr. Faber.
Okay, is, he is joining us, though, I do see him. Okay, very good. If I may, just to be consistent, I ask each of you to please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you'll tell the truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Thank you. Please proceed.
So I'd like to start by thanking Andrea Stanley of Senator Kavanaugh's office, and thank the committee for hearing our testimony and for addressing such a pressing issue. So my name is Max Besperus, I'm an Assistant Professor of Sociology at the University of Wisconsin-Madison, where I'm affiliated with the Center for Demography and Ecology and the Center for Financial Security. For the past 10 years, I've studied real estate agents in New York State, and in a new book called Upsold, which is published by the University of Chicago Press, I show that real estate agents are key for understanding various aspects of urban inequality. With me today is Dr. Jacob Faber. Dr. Faber is an Associate Professor of Sociology in public service at NYU, where he is affiliated with the Furman Center for Real Estate and Urban Policy. He's an expert in housing markets and foreclosures, the history and present-day consequences of residential racial segregation, and mortgage redlining. Together, he and I have conducted multiple studies of discrimination in housing and other consumer markets in New York and across the country. The findings of Newsday's investigation into racial steering by real estate agents on Long Island are sadly not surprising. Discrimination in housing is a problem across the United States. Study after... Discrimination in housing is a problem across the United States. Study after study has demonstrated that non-white home seekers, particularly black and Latino ones, are at a disadvantage relative to whites in terms of the quality of the housing made available to them and the resources of the neighborhoods in which they are shown available housing units. We want to stress that discrimination is not only harmful to the individuals who are unable to access housing as, as a result of that discrimination, but that discrimination itself in the housing market perpetuates racial inequality and segregation more generally. By directing home seekers of color away from white neighborhoods, racial steering helps maintain segregation. A wide body of research has established the negative effects of segregation. These effects are pernicious and widespread. Residential segregation leads to adverse health outcomes, lower levels of economic mobility, poorer quality schools, fewer community institutions, uneven exposure to environmental pollution, higher crime, and lower housing values. All of these social ills fall disproportionately on people in communities of color. We can clearly see the consequences of persistent segregation and inequality in the dramatic impact of the ongoing pandemic that has affected communities of color in New York State and nationwide. In our own research, we have found that real estate agents in New York State are less likely to work in black and Latino neighborhoods and that neighborhoods with more real estate agents experience higher increases in home value over time. While we found that few real estate agents outwardly support residential racial, racial segregation, we also found that agents' sole concern about racial steering was getting caught rather than the impacts of their discriminatory behavior. In other words, agents were worried about enforcement of existing fair housing laws and often sought to avoid explicit talk of race with their clients. However, as we've noticed, they often use, uh, coded language about the racial composition of different neighborhoods. And in our work, as well as in the Newsday investigation, reveals that agents continue to steer home seekers based on their race and ethnicity. What this indicates is that agents broadly do not understand or appreciate the full scope of what discrimination is or why it is harmful. In some ways, this is not surprising. The topic of fair housing constitutes less than 5% of the curriculum of the state mandated course needed to become a licensed real estate salesperson. Moreover, there is very little oversight in how these courses are taught. When I, for example, sat in on multiple fair housing courses, precious time was taken by instructors making flippant jokes about discrimination, debating with students about whether or not different ethnic or religious groups constituted racial categories and what kinds of individuals are more or less racist. This leads us to suggest that stronger, more robust educational requirements are desperately needed. Not only should a larger portion of the curriculum be dedicated to fair housing, but more education overall should be required. The 75 hours of required classroom time is not onerous compared to other states. Obtaining a real estate salesperson license in Texas, for example, requires 180 hours of instruction. So the state could require more education on fair housing without burdening those who want to become a licensed real estate salesperson. But additional education will only work if the content of that education is better regulated. The state must have higher standards for licensing real estate instructors and should do more to ensure that what they teach students is not simply rote memorization. Moreover, licensees must receive better training about what to do when their clients ask about the racial composition of neighborhoods or express racist preferences. Simply ignoring race and racism itself perpetuates racially unequal outcomes. Because real estate agents are so central to how we find housing, it seems more than reasonable to expect real estate agents to know the law and know why it is harmful when they discriminate. We therefore propose that agents learn not simply to ignore questions of race from clients, but instead to confront racism, be transparent with their clients about agents' responsibilities by abiding by fair housing laws. While we believe that efforts to better educate real estate professionals and the public are essential, we also need additional tools to ensure fair housing access. The Newsday article was an excellent example of the importance of housing audits for exposure to discrimination. Uh, Dr. Faber and I have conducted similar research and have shown that this kinds of bias, these kinds of biases are pervasive. So in closing, I'll say that the Secretary of States and Attorney Generals and Governors' offices should conduct regular audits of housing markets across the state to identify and track bias against people of color as well as other people of protected classes. Testing can be a valuable and relatively inexpensive tool to identify where discrimination is more or less prevalent. Dr. Faber and I are more than willing to assist in this effort. I know my time is up, but the last thing that I'll, uh, advocate for is more funding for housing counselors. Past research has shown that home seekers who use housing counselors during their search find better quality housing in less segregated neighborhoods and tend to stay in their homes for longer. We want to thank the committee for the invitation to testify and for beginning to engage in a very serious problem.
Thank you, Dr. Besperus, and thank you, Dr. Faber, for being here. I'm going to turn it over to Senator Kevin Thomas.
Sorry, I pressed the wrong button. So, uh, got a quick question. Uh, we heard from a number of licensed brokers throughout this, uh, hearing today and, uh, they apparently supervise thousands of sales agents, right, that go around selling the homes and everything. And they say that they can supervise, uh, these individuals, um, even though they're in the thousands. What do you have to say about that?
I would say that I think the oversight that they're referring to tends to be quite lax, um, if, uh, available at all. I think brokers have a large incentive to have their agents make deals because that's what makes them money. And I think as long as they're bringing in sales, in my experience and in my research, I don't seem to see a ton of, um, uh, there's, put it this way, there's a lot of variation in what brokers think oversight is, um, and, uh, how they relate to their, uh, uh, real estate agents that they supervise.
Do you believe that there should be a limit, uh, on how many, uh, agents can work under a specific license?
Uh, it's something that I haven't thought about in terms of, uh, policy, but it does seem reasonable to expect that one particular broker can't legitimately supervise more than a certain number of agents or give them the kinds of advice when they're confronted with problems, uh, whether it's not just in fair housing, but in any kind of aspect of doing the work. And so if we expect brokers to have regular meetings with their agents, right, for their agents to have free lines of communication to their brokers, then yes, I would say it seems extremely reasonable to put some cap on the number, right, that brokers are able to technically supervise if we're seeing that that supervision tends to be pretty weak.
Thank you.
Senator Kavanaugh.
Great. Uh, thank you very much, uh, for your testimony and for all of your work. And, you know, as, as you mentioned, you've been working with Andrea Stanley in our office, uh, on these issues and we, we appreciate, uh, all of your input. Um, so just to review, you, you, uh, very, uh, thoughtfully laid out a lot of the issues here. I'm just reviewing the, the proposals, the things that you're proposing that we consider are, uh, additional training, better training that focuses on the effects of discrimination, a, making sure that those things are actually mandated and not just sort of optional parts of training. We had, we had somebody testify before that the people that were doing this training on Long Island were fired, at least by one firm. Uh, they were through some multiple listing service and new trainers have come in. Is there an issue of the quality of, of, of trainers? Are there states that are reviewing that, certifying traders, that sort of thing?
There's definitely an issue with quality in, uh, my, uh, investigation of housing, uh, of real estate licensing classes. I think the, um, quality of that instruction overall tends to be pretty poor. Um, uh, from my understanding, the, um, requirements to become an instructor for licensing real estate classes is not particularly onerous. You simply have to have worked in the industry for a fair amount of time and take a test on your own. So this is, when we're advocating, I think, for more education, this is obviously something that needs to happen at multiple levels, right? It needs to happen certainly for people who are seeking to become licensed real estate salespeople, but absolutely what we're advocating for is more regulation of instruction, right? And how that actually occurs, which includes, I think, probably more information, more education, and stricter standards for people who are seeking to become instructors in licensing real estate schools.
Can I just add one quick, uh, one big addition to that is, you know, it was, one of the things that was made dramatically clear by the testimony from the, um, earlier real estate agencies was, um, and Max kind of mentioned this in our, um, opening statement, is just a complete misunderstanding of what discrimination is and how it works. Um, you know, being a person of color, having people of color, your friends circle or family or your office, uh, doesn't preclude you from acting in discriminatory ways, uh, nor does, you know, what, um, you know, what's in your heart, which is something that I heard, uh, uh, come up over and over again in the, uh, in the testimony, that intent is irrelevant, that the patterns of behavior, what, what-
Right, and not to put too, not to put too fine a point on it, but we, we made that point a few times, that the law certainly doesn't talk about what's in your heart or intent, but there, there is research that demonstrates that people can be engaging in discriminatory behavior without, uh, a conscious, uh, animus toward any of the people they're dealing with?
Absolutely. Uh, there's a very, very large literature on what's, uh, generally called implicit bias, um, that, you know, there's a lot of cognitive processing that all of us are doing all the time, um, and much of it we're not aware of. Uh, and so even people acting, um, in the best intent can still carry around these biases around, uh, race, gender, and other protected classes. And, uh, there's numerous studies connecting, uh, these measurements of implicit bias with, uh, uh, mistreatment of people of color.
You, uh, mentioned that, uh, and I thought this was really, really important, this notion that brokers need to know from the training, not just sort of how to, like, what the law says and how to avoid being, uh, bound to have violated, but the effects of discriminatory behavior. Uh, can you talk a little bit more about, you know, for our, for our purposes and for anybody who's watching, um, that, can you talk a little bit more about why housing discrimination is so problematic?
Jacob, do you want to go ahead?
Uh, why don't you go?
So to the first part of your question, Senator, I think the, um, issue about what the content of the classes needs to entail and include, um, is that, you know, these classes basically say, this is what discrimination is. It's treating people differently based on their race or their gender or whatever category. Um, don't do it, right? And you should remember, here's the date of the passage of the Fair Housing Act. Here's the list of categories that you can't discriminate against. That's obviously all information we want real estate agents, I think, to know on some level. But without, I think, a firm understanding of why discrimination is harmful to communities, right? Then there's not a lot of incentive really for real estate agents to think deeply about what their actions do, right? And so there is a lot of research showing that in communities across the United States, real estate agents are, um, very quick to categorize people based on their race and match them to particular neighborhoods, right? And like I said in my comments, the reason that segregation, that this discrimination, implicit segregation is so harmful is these myriad effects that it has, not just on the people who get the, you know, one housing, one housing universe is another, but on the effects of the community. And so I definitely believe that if real estate agents had more training about why segregation is harmful, what segregation is, why it's harmful, I think, hopefully, right, they would at least be thinking a little bit more deeply about what the consequences of their own actions are. Because I think real estate agents, they have these incentives to close deals, right? They're doing this because it's their economic imperative to some extent, uh, and they're doing it in quick ways, right? And it's easy to categorize people. It's easy to categorize neighborhoods, right? But trying to get at those implicit biases that Dr. Faber was just talking about, um, we can do that in classes, right? We can provide them with very, you know, not a ton more information, just a little bit, and it might allow them to reflect somewhat, right, on what their actions are and the consequences of them.
My time is up. I may have a few more questions if there's more, but I want to turn it back over to the chair first.
Thank you. I'll go to Senator Krueger. You need to unmute yourself and turn on your video, Senator.
Am I here now?
Your voice is here.
I do not see you.
Okay, I'm trying to get the audio, the video on also. Here we go.
There you go.
Thank you. I want to thank the chairs of this committee and the staff work that went into this hearing today. I have actually been listening all day. And I pretty much heard every single real estate agent we had and their bosses tell us that Newsday must have been completely wrong. Everything that Newsday wrote up was wrong. They've now all been retrained. And yet they still can't actually explain the definitions of what it would be to be steering, um, people or discriminating. So I wanted to ask you two experts, did you read the Newsday, um, results? Do you think it was all made up? Or don't you think, as I do, that this is all true? Did either of you read the Newsday?
Yes.
Exposee?
Yes, uh, and I was, um, I was actually in communication with the reporters who were, um, uh, doing it because I was, um, in the middle of, um, a similar study of, of discrimination, um, in the housing market, uh, myself. Um, and, you know, the findings that they came to, as, as Dr. Besperus said earlier, are no surprise. Um, you know, virtually every study of, uh, of this type shows discrimination against people of color, um, in the housing market. And the evidence that they, um, that they provided and that was kind of shown in clips today during this hearing were incredibly, uh, damning, I think. And I, uh, with you was kind of amazed and appalled at the same time uh, about, uh, the numerous efforts to avoid naming, uh, or describing a certain behavior while also claiming that they don't participate in it. And how could you know whether or not you're doing something you don't know how to define? Um, so the, you know, the ability of, uh, each of these agencies to, you know, police and educate themselves um, just is, is wholly inadequate.
And that's exactly what I also wanted to say. I think the system we have clearly is wholly and completely inadequate and that these agencies should not be doing or developing their own training materials and testing their own people because I just don't think they're prepared to even admit that there's an issue out there for them. I am also very curious whether you have seen, you're both professors from two different parts of the country and who are, you know, really expert in this. What models have you seen that have been effective in turning around, um, the industry in any part of this country? Because I think as the Senate Democrats be and Republicans who might be joining us on this hearing, we want to make sure we come up with a model that's actually going to get at the problem and solve it, rather than have another hearing in five years and learn nothing's gotten better. So would you recommend a specific path for us to get there? Either through regulation, through statute, or even through a specific curriculum that might be required of real estate agents and brokers in our state?
So I think one thing that Dr. Faber and I are, are certainly, um, would advocate for, like he mentioned, is more testing, right? More testing across the state in communities, right? Because you will see some variation. I think there are some places where real estate agents may be more or less prone to discriminatory behavior. And, but only through testing would be, we'd be able to identify which communities need more or less intervention, right? So testing is certainly one. And then something that I alluded to at the end of my prepared remarks was that you're asking, Senator, about interventions that seem to have worked in other parts of the country. And unfortunately, um, there's not a lot of great research about what's to be done because I think this problem goes beyond simply great training for real estate agents. I think that can be better, that can improve, right, the issue. But this is obviously something systemic, right, about biases in the housing market. Segregation is a longstanding, uh, geographic issue, one that is not going to be solved simply by changing real estate agent behavior. But one thing that has shown to be somewhat effective, uh, is the use of, um, housing counselors and taxpayer dollars for nonprofit groups that advertise integrated safe places to live that have remained integrated for long periods of time. So there's one particular community, Oak Park, Illinois, which is a suburb of Chicago, which, um, Chicago's a very segregated place, a very segregated city, a very segregated region. But this one town has been able to be relatively racially integrated for quite a long period of time. And there's some research indicating that there's a housing council nonprofit that's been set up there for at least the past 30 years. And one thing that it does is it advertises Oak Park as a great place to live to home seekers, but it also provides housing counseling to people moving from other places to Oak Park and within Oak Park. So providing more information for consumers about where housing is available, this is one thing that the state could do, right? The state could actually mandate that real estate agents provide more information, whether it's in an online clearinghouse or in other forms of communication, about all available housing to consumers, right? So if the housing market is going to remain a market, one thing that we absolutely want is consumers to have more access to information. And right now, real estate agents have a great deal of discretion about where they share their information about available listings, with whom they share it with. One thing that municipalities and the state certainly could do is mandate that that, that that information gets aggregated to a higher level and is more accessible, uh, to a broader set of consumers.
That's a very interesting- That's a very interesting idea. I lived in Chicago, I remember Oak Park being somewhat different than many of the other parts of Chicago. Thank you both for testifying today. Thank you, Mr. Chairs.
Thank you. I'll grab the mic here for a question. One of the many remarkable insights that we've gleaned from today is the simple fact that it seems like no one, no agents, after I think it's 86 matching tests were conducted by Newsday, and all of these findings of discrimination, people on videotape, no one was fired. No one. And even other, you know, disciplinary action that, you know, maybe stops short of firing, no disciplinary action. Can I carry a reaction to that? Look, you know, you two are experts in this subject. I am a mere layperson trying to help run a hearing and look at this issue as a legislator. Do you think this is, is this part of a pattern that you've, you know, in other regions around the country you've looked at, where these agents, they just walk away from these studies and from these tests without any repercussion? Your general reaction?
So for me, it was kind of both shocking and not for the reasons that, many of the reasons that we've talked about already, that this kind of discrimination is pervasive in housing markets across the country and all kinds of markets as well. But the, it felt particularly brazen to hear several people testify to committing acts that are plainly illegal, like talking about schools, the one real estate agent saying, I forget the exact, it was something like Latinos are taking over this neighborhood or school district, you know, plainly illegal activities with very little remorse and no, and no discipline. And this is, you know, this is a pattern that we see whenever industry is asked to police its own behavior.
I would add to that, that I think the issue, right, is not that these individual agents haven't been fired. I mean, the real estate agent brokerage relationship is independent contracting, you know, they could very easily sort of go to another brokerage, right? It really is incumbent, I think, upon the state to do a better job of, of regulating licensure, right? And so I believe it was Senator Thomas, right, who had the question about brokerage oversight, which I think is certainly part of this, right? And I think some of what you're getting at, Senator, is that these brokers aren't paying any attention. And so why would they care even if their agent is sort of caught, you know, being steering, breaking the law? But ultimately, I think it's really going to be an issue that is incumbent, it's incumbent upon the state, I think, to, to do the regulating, because as Dr. Faber alluded to, whenever you ask an industry to police itself, it's, you know, plainly obvious that they, they don't, they never, they very rarely do a good job of it.
Understood. Senator Kavanaugh, do you have anything? You had follow-ups, I think?
Just one more. I alluded to this earlier, but just for, for the record today and for anybody who's watching, and I mean, this is, I guess, maybe particularly for Dr. Faber, but Dr. Besper, you could also jump in. What the, the effect of housing discrimination on families who are excluded from particular, who are steered to certain communities, both in the short run and the long run, in terms of their wealth accumulation, in terms of their well-being, can you talk a little bit more about that?
Sure. So, you know, one of the things that social scientists have really provided mounting evidence for over the past decade or so is that place matters tremendously, that where you grew up can have an enormous effect on a whole host of, of life outcomes, educational opportunity, environmental quality, access to employment, et cetera. And because where you live matters in all of these arenas, you know, how the housing search process sorts different people into different types of neighborhoods in a racialized manner carries forward this inequality. You mentioned the, the wealth gap, which is something that is larger today than it was three decades ago. And a great deal of that has to do with the way that residential segregation has not just segregated individuals, but it segregated the opportunity for, for wealth accumulation. And then that wealth accumulation, of course, you know, translates into better schools, intergenerational transfers of status through investments in entrepreneurship and education. So there's really, this is a really enormous problem that is kind of reciprocal in the way that it recreates inequality over time. And we know, of course, that racial discrimination, which Newsday has shown, which Dr. Besper and I have shown, plays an important role in sorting individuals across neighborhoods.
We, we've been talking a lot about overt discrimination here today, because of course that was the subject of the investigation. But, you know, there's been this thing, ongoing thing in the last couple of years where the Obama administration had recommitted itself to affirmatively furthering fair housing. The Trump administration has abrogated its commitment, the federal government's commitment to that. Is that something that we should be doing? Obviously, should we be doing it, that at the national level? Should we be doing it at the state level? Should we be incorporating obligations for state and local government and other participants in housing markets to affirmatively further fair housing?
Absolutely. And I think that, you know, New York State can implement, you know, its own version of AFFH, and, you know, hopefully conditional on a successful election this coming November, we can get the Obama rule back in place. I would say another place, you know, policy lever here is, is, you know, and this is not just me, the researcher, talking here, but the data collection. So, you know, the Home Mortgage Disclosure Act requires that every mortgage lender provide data to the federal government on every single application that the lender receives, and basic demographic information about the applicant, and then what happens to the application, whether or not it's approved and the price of that loan. And something like that for the real estate industry could also shed tremendous light on discriminatory patterns that, to your point and your question earlier about implicit bias, often happens without intent.
So you would, you would require brokers to gather data on the ethnic composition of the, of the, of their clientele, on some of the outcomes of their contacts with those folks, and then on an aggregate level, we could see how different parties are, are performing? Is that, is that a?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we could do, we could see that on the aggregate level. You could even see it on the firm level. You know, one way of addressing this problem is to not, you know, wait for investigative or journalism's bombshells, but of showing discrimination, because we know every single study that has explored racial discrimination has shown it. So a way of addressing this proactively could take the form of reversing the roles of providing evidence in the situation. So assuming or requiring real estate agencies to prove that they don't discriminate, rather than policing or seeking out and then punishing discrimination.
Okay. Thank you. My time's up.
Great. Thank you very much. I'm not seeing any other questions. I think you're free to go. Thank you very much for coming by and your testimony.
Thank you. Thank you both for all of your work and for joining us today.
We are going to now take a 15-minute break. We are probably a little past lunchtime, but for those of us who have been here since the start, I, we're probably hungry, I know I am. So we'll be back at 2:45 to continue.
Thank you, Senator Scovis.
Okay, welcome back. We are nearing the home stretch here. We are now going to call panel seven, which is Akhtar Somek and Rosalind Resnick from Coldwell Banker. Okay, we have both of you. Very good. I, who, I, I suspect you both have some opening remarks. Who would like to start?
I'm okay to start.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Senators.
Welcome.
My name is Rosalind Resnick. I'm a real estate salesperson in Gretnick, New York. I was asked to testify before the committee today in connection with a November 19 Newsday report. My attorney, John Masebo, Tressler LLP, is present with me today. I would like to start off, I'm sorry, I would like to start off by telling each of you a little bit about myself. I was raised on Long Island. I became a real estate agent in 2015. I've lived in Gretnick for 19 years. I've been able to use my knowledge of the area, as well as Nassau County, Suffolk County, and Queens, to help clients search for their dream home. I love my job.
I apologize, my mistake. I forgot to swear you both in before proceeding. So if, if you could both please raise your right hand, and then we can get to your remarks. Do you solemnly swear that you'll tell the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you. Again, I apologize. Go ahead.
Can I continue?
Yes, yes.
I love my job. I'm passionate about serving people, and I do understand the gravity of the decision to purchase a home and consider it to be a great honor to be given the opportunity to assist a client in this special process. Ten months since the publication of the Newsday report has had a significant impact on my life. The allegations stem from tests conducted by their investigators approximately three years before the publication of the report. At the time of the tests, I'd only been in the industry a little over a year, having switched careers to work in real estate. I truly believe my lack of experience at the time the tests were conducted contributed to the issues we are discussing today. Since the issues raised in the Newsday report were brought to my attention, I've worked to continuously improve myself professionally and personally. I'm not been the subject of any complaint for any reason, not in the short time before the testing or in the years that followed. My ability to earn a living and my reputation is at stake. I'm here in the spirit of cooperation and because I understand how important these issues are. In regards to the tested issue, I was contacted by the first tester on June 3, 2016. I did not meet the second tester until more than nine months later, March 6, 2017. Although the testers provided similar information, they added significantly different details during their conversations with me that impacted the listings generated for each. This was further impacted by the difference in available listings in the span of over nine months. Prior to each meeting, I researched potential home listings in hopes of being as prepared as possible for these potential clients. It was very early in my real estate career, and I was very eager. Because each of the testers seemed unfamiliar with Long Island, I provided each with an overview of the North Shore area. I also physically showed property listings to both of the testers, a fact which is missing from the Newsday report. My hope is that my testimony today provides a fuller picture of my interactions with the testers. I believe I did provide equal service to both testers. However, I'd like to apologize to anyone who is offended by some of my comments. I take great pride in my profession, and I work very hard to build a reputation in the real estate community that people can trust. Thank you for providing me with this opportunity to speak before you today.
Thank you very much. We'll now hear from Ms. Somek, and I apologize if I'm mispronouncing your name.
Good afternoon. My name is Akhtar Somek, and I'm a real estate broker in Coldwell Banker in Gretnick, New York. I was asked to provide my testimony today about Newsday report on housing discrimination on Long Island. I would first like to provide some background about myself. As you can tell, probably, English is not my native language. I was born and raised in Iran. In 1986, I moved to the United States with my family. I had to leave Iran with my family because of discrimination and persecution, persecution we faced for our religion beliefs. When we arrived to the United States, my husband, our children, and myself settled in Gretnick, New York. Sadly, my husband passed away in 1994. This required me to not only raise my four children by establishing a career as a real estate salesperson. All of my children attended in Gretnick Public Schools. And for almost 30 years, I have had a wonderful career helping people finding place to call home. I never received any complaint from any of my clients or prospective clients of any type of discriminations or any other reason, and always complained, completed my continuation education in real estate. In November 2019, Newsday published their report. I understand in that 2016 Newsday sent two undercover testers, or also understand that Newsday accused me of treating these two people differently. This allegation from Newsday was very hurtful because I have personally experienced the horrible damage that discrimination can cause, and I would never do that to any another human being. The Newsday report made an unfair interpretation of what happened during my interaction with these testers. I would like to take this opportunity to tell you about the two undercover testers that Newsday sent. On August 16, 2016, I met with Kelly Marchena. She told me she was looking to purchase a home for her, her husband, and her son in North Shore of, an area around Gretnick. She said that she was looking for a place close to water, and her budget was $2 million. During the meeting, Ms. Marchena, I, I told her about different villages of Gretnick. Ms. Marchena was able to view properties that day, and I drove Ms. Marchena in my car to see houses. While in the car, Ms. Marchena asked if all of Gretnick was one school system or different villages. As I mentioned, I am very familiar with the school because my four children went to the local schools. In 2016, when meeting took place, there were changes being made by school to address class size that were confusing even for residents living in Gretnick. What was shown in Newsday video was my attempt to answer Ms. Marchena's question about the complicated optional zones created in that time. What a short Newsday clip does not show that I was, that I go on saying that the school in Gretnick, there is no difference between South or North schools, and all the same, they're the same. About three months later, Ms. Pansillon contacted me. She told me she wanted to meet about buying a house in North Shore area. On November 14, 2016, I met with Ms. Pansillon. She also told me she's looking to buy a house close to water, and her budget was $2 million. I told to Ms. Marcel, Pansillon, about nine different villages in Gretnick and searched for listing to show to Ms. Pansillon that day, but she was not available to do so during that meeting. Ms. Pansillon never asked me any question about school. It is important that you know that the Newsday didn't report, mention that there, we had another scheduled meeting with Ms. Pansillon a few days later, and I took, drove her to view some houses. According to, according of that second meeting with Pansillon was also not published by Newsday. I understand why some people may be upset with the way that I tried to describe the confusion changes being made to the school that time. I hope that additional information provided today can help to better explain what I hope that additional information provided today can help to better explain what happened that day. I know in my heart that I am not a person Newsday had tried to portray me. I would never treat anybody like I was treated when I was forced to leave my country because of my religion. Since the Newsday report was published, I'd worked on my better understanding of English language, the way that I can express myself. And I'm truly sorry if I were offended anybody. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your testimony. I'll now turn it over to Ms. Resnick.
I'm muting. Okay. Yes, sir.
Oh, sorry. You already gave your opening statement. I apologize.
It's been a long day.
That's what happens when you go on a break. You just, we're getting back into it here. I'm going to turn it over to actually Senator Kevin Thomas for some questions.
Thank you, Senator Scoofus. Yeah, it is a very long day. I just want to first say thank you to both Ms. Resnick and Ms. Somach. Because you're the only two that apologize for the actions that Newsday reported on. Out of so many agents, so many panels today, you two are the only ones that said, hey, I have tried to improve myself and I also want to apologize for what was found. So I want to thank both of you for that. Listen, we all make mistakes. That's why we are here to figure out how to better all of this. Can either one of you tell me what new trainings you received and the new, you know, supervision that you've both received after all this came out?
Well, can I start? All right. I took a couple of more fair housing classes to get a better handle. There is room, I think, for improvement in the training. Because maybe we don't really understand the things, the effects of something that might be said. I think that needs to be taken care of.
And also, I've always, in our office, always we are in training. Every week we have meetings and at the meetings always we have subjects to talk about. And also for classes, I did extra that I always I'm updated. And in month of July, the month, two months ago, we did another three hours of fair housing classes.
And have either one of you receive, are either one of you receiving like one-on-one supervision from brokers or from, you know, associate brokers about how to go forward with selling homes from now on?
Always, our manager, always they are involved. And we have always, they are available for us to have a one-by-one face-to-face meetings and discussing any issues that we have. And definitely, I have 30 years' experience in real estate. And we never can say that we are done and we know it all. We always learn new things.
Okay. How about Ms. Resnick? I think she just...
Yes, I'm here. I just, I need to mention, I think that I am now with Douglas Elliman. And, but in both places, an emphasis, I feel, has been placed on unawareness of the situations and the problem.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Senator Thomas. Senator Kavanaugh, do you have questions?
I do, thank you. So you both have testified that you have become more aware, you've done additional training. Do you think that that, from your experience, is that something that is going on throughout the industry and the various firms that you're familiar with?
I can only...
Additional training and, yeah.
I can only speak for the agent, the two agencies, and yes, there's a lot of training.
Okay. And Ms. Resnick, you mentioned that you think that it's been helpful to you, but perhaps not adequately indicating the effects of some of these things.
Well, I think I was referring to the previous trainings over the years that it was very cut and dried. And I don't think we went deep enough into the effects of not following the guidelines.
I just want to, I want to get on the record, and you've both been very forthcoming here and I appreciate that. I just, because, you know, we've had different witnesses about different issues today and I don't think we've discussed religion much. So I just want to, just for the record here, Ms. Resnick, you had met with a white homebuyer and a black prospective homebuyer.
Yes.
And they were similarly situated financially. And one of the ways you treated them differently is you discussed the religious makeup of Great Neck with the white homebuyer but not the black homebuyer. And again, you've said that you've expressed, you know, reservations now about the way you handled that. What was your understanding then about discussing the religious makeup of the community and what is your understanding now?
I'm not sure. I didn't discuss it with both people. I have never seen the entire three hours or how many hours it is. I'm pretty consistent in what I try to tell people. There was no hidden meaning behind it, if I did not mention it earlier to the first tester.
Okay, and you're, you don't have access to the entire video. I think Newsday asserts that you did not speak about that with the black homebuyer.
They also didn't. Okay, I'm sorry.
No, no, just, I'm just, I'm just saying for the record. I'm not saying the fact that they, you're making assertion, they're making assertion. I'm just, I'm just noting that for the record. I'm not saying...
I understand.
You're wrong necessarily. Based on your understanding now, is it acceptable to talk about the racial or religious makeup of an area unsolicited with a homebuyer?
Absolutely not. And it's very hard because people do ask and now I tell them I can't answer.
Okay, so you think, is that an important thing in, to be included in the training? How, we had some experts testify to this earlier, but from your perspective, is it important that brokers be trained in how to answer questions like that? If somebody says, you know, what's the race of this community? What, you know, asks specific questions about their religion?
We need to be trained by...
Okay, to actually just specifically to answer those questions, not just to, you know, try to avoid bringing up topics you're not supposed to bring up?
Correct.
Okay. But your understanding now is that even if you did it in the even-handed way, if you discuss with two homebuyers, even if you, even if you say the same words to both of them, if you're saying, I would just like to note that Great Neck is a community with, trying to find the exact words here, but you know, it's a community with a lot of, you know, Orthodox Jewish people in it. But that's not behavior that is acceptable under the current law.
I understand.
In an even-handed way. Okay. I think I will end there, other than to thank you both for participating today and for your testimony.
Very good. Thank you, Senator Kavanaugh. I'll jump in and ask each of you, if I may. Putting your situations aside vis-à-vis the Newsday investigation, talk to me about what your general sense on Long Island, in the industry, how often does steering happen? Do you think, you know, by looking at your colleagues, by just, you know, sort of seeing and hearing, you know, what's going on around you, is it commonplace, would you say? Do you think it's very rare? What do you think about, again, putting your situations aside, when you read the Newsday expose, what was your takeaway for everyone else that was, that was looked at? I'd love to get your insight on those questions and feelings.
I don't think I can comment on all of Long Island. I feel that, as in any profession, there must be people doing the right things and some people may be not doing the right thing.
Okay.
For me, that we are individual working and usually when we work with people, it's us within us and our customers. So I don't know about other people's behavior. But in general, I can tell, I was surprised with Newsday report because our office always we discuss these details. And it always be, we've been trained to treat people equally with respect.
Okay. Do you, now that you've been involved with Newsday's efforts, I'm curious what your thoughts are about testing? And whether you think that it is valuable, whether you think there should be more of it? If you can speak to what your thoughts are about that?
My opinion is that education is the key. As much as we get more education and information, we train better, it helps.
So how do you suggest though, so I understand, training is, I agree, a very important element of all this. But once the agent leaves the training, what tools do you suggest be employed to make sure that agents aren't violating the law, aren't disregarding what they just learned in the training? If it's not more testing, how do you suggest that we ensure that discrimination isn't happening?
I can just talk about myself. I just try to be more understanding of feeling of the people and respecting people in any cases.
Okay, thank you. Rosalyn, do you have anything?
Testing serves a purpose in many areas, not just this. But I think it has to be done in a much more measured way.
If I can ask, what do you mean by that?
Well, I believe the rules for testing are that they should be on the same day or within a couple of days. My case was nine months apart.
Okay. That's, that's your primary concern with testing?
I'm not a testing expert. I'm sorry.
Okay. Yeah, I, neither am I, for the record. I was just curious what you had thought in light of everything that's transpired since last year. I think I am okay with questions. Do, I don't see any other hands among colleagues. I'll just throw it back out and ask if Senator Kavanaugh or Thomas has any follow-up. You're good?
I think I'm good again. Thank you. Thank you again, both of you, for testifying today.
Very good. Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much.
Take care. We will now move on to panel number eight. This is our second group of fair housing professionals, experts. And we're going to hear from Elaine Gross, who's at Erase Racism, and Fred Freiberg, Fair Housing Justice. And I believe both of you were at our first hearing, if I'm not mistaken, late last year. So welcome back. Who would like to begin? Ms. Gross?
Sure.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. So, committee chairs and members of the committees, I am Elaine Gross and I'm the President/CEO of Erase Racism, the regional civil rights organization based here on Long Island. And we've talked about Levittown today. Long Island is renowned as the model of structural racism. And the problem that we are examining today, structural racism as it relates to housing, is therefore not new to us. But it is a problem that deserves our relentless commitment to eradication. So one of the things you asked me to talk about was COVID-19 pandemic. And it has highlighted the enormous racial disparities evident in who is most impacted by it, with African-Americans and Latinx people disproportionately affected. And I'd like to point out, just as an example, on Long Island, the age-adjusted death rate per 100,000 people currently stands at 60.9% for white people and 181.2% for black people. So that means for every white person who dies COVID-19, dies of COVID-19 on Long Island, three black people die. So I will note that there's an overlap between the COVID-19 hotspots in the majority-minority neighborhoods and the same neighborhoods, for example, Huntington, Hempstead, Brentwood, that Newsday found the realty agent steered back black people towards and white people away from. The other thing that you asked was to speak on the tragic killings of African-Americans. And the only thing that I would say is that both the killing of George Floyd in Minneapolis and Breonna Taylor in Louisville have generated this nationwide discussion about inhumane actions of police officers. I do mention in a June 4 commentary published in The Hill was titled "Underlying Americans' Unrest Is Structural Racism." There is a long history of government-sponsored structural racism. And that is in the case of the police and also in housing. I also want to just point out that people remember that the National Association of Real Estate boards were the original creators of the racial covenants. And I want to also point out that the Trump administration has undermined fair housing by eliminating AFFH. So we've talked today, there are some pieces of legislation that are addressing some of the current problems. And I note that the Senate Bill 6874A, that passed, that Senator Garance's bill, really leaves no excuse for the Department of State now to discipline the realty agents. And we applaud that bill. There are several bills that have not been passed yet. And taken together, all of the bills represent strong progress in the right direction. We would note that for Senate Bill 6713, Senator Hoyman introduced that. And we were, we were the original organizers of the statewide coalition pushing for source of income as a protected class. So we're very, very happy to see this bill will provide the appropriate notification so that people know that they have this protection. I think it's a game changer. For Senate Bill 7625, Senator Kaplan introduced that. And it talks about the fair housing testing being done by the Attorney General. And as has been stated frequently, the people who are discriminated against will most likely not know that they are the victims. And we want the power of the Attorney General's office behind fair housing enforcement. So this is a great thing and I'm glad that it will be a public report that they provide and that the legislature is asking for this. For Senate Bill 8096, Senator Kavanaugh's bill, that is certainly critical. I mentioned that on the federal level, affirmatively furthering fair housing has been eliminated. And we in New York State should be proud that the state is taking broad steps to further fair housing. And the Senate Bill 7581, Senator Scoofus's bill, it is mandating that the required instructions for realty agents include a focus on systemic racism. And of course, Erase Racism has been doing that kind of training since our inception in 2001. It is critical and I suggest that you call on us if we can be some of assistance, of some assistance in that regard. For Senate Bill 7632, introduced by Senator Thomas, we need to have increased penalties, which is what this bill is doing. That will help us with the enforcement.
Ms. Gross, I could just ask you to wrap up in maybe 15 or 20 seconds?
Sure.
Thank you.
So, my final comment, and it's not the focus of this hearing, but I just want to have it on the record. The primary culprit... The primary culprit of perpetuating housing discrimination in New York State is New York State's adoption of the home rule law. Long Island has two county and 13 towns, 97 incorporated villages, creating municipal fragmentation that divides rather than unites. And there is a recent paper that I wrote, which you can see on my website for the NYU Furman Center, Housing Discrimination and Local Control. So that's the next thing for you guys to think about. So thank you again for the opportunity to testify today, and I welcome your intervention on these issues. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll turn it over to Mr. Freyberg.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, senators. Thank you very much for inviting me to provide additional testimony at the second joint hearing of Senate committees today. I know you've had a very long day, and I intend to make my remarks very brief. As you know, my name is Fred Freyberg. I'm the founder and executive director of the Fair Housing Justice Center, a regional civil rights organization based in New York City. First, I was asked to comment on some proposed legislation that is pending before the state legislature and whether this legislation will help to address the problem of systemic discrimination and residential segregation. And I provided written comments to the committees. And I I put in those comments my specific suggestions. Generally, I think they all are worthy of support. And I've made a few suggestions on a couple of the bills that I think will make them stronger and even better pieces of legislation. So I will I won't go over it in my oral testimony. I'll just leave it with you in terms of my written testimony. But I do think they're worthy of support. I was also invited to offer comments on the implications of the current COVID-19 pandemic and the numerous protests against racial injustice that we've witnessed across the country in recent months. As New Yorkers faced increased increased housing instability due to the COVID-19 pandemic and at a time when our nation is engaged in a conversation about the issue of racial justice and equity, it is really the right time to enact some legislation that can help reduce illegal housing discrimination and residential racial segregation. I think the legislative package that I just mentioned is is worthy of broad support. But it's clearly not all that needs to be done from a policy perspective. I mentioned some of the other issues in my December testimony, and Elaine Gross has also referenced some additional issues that I think are worthy of consideration as well. Finally, I was asked to respond to the testimony provided earlier by real estate professionals who were subpoenaed to testify at today's hearing. As I explained to the Senate staff, I stand by my comments on the Newsday investigation, and that is still the case. Obviously, I was not able to go back and check the facts in each of the tests to compare it against what each agent said today. I will say briefly that I found the responses from the brokers of the firms rather uninspired when you asked the question about what else could they do to make sure that agents are complying with fair housing laws. I would have expected a few more creative responses to that question than than what you actually received. But since there are multiple government investigations underway right now in in examining the conduct of these real estate agents and brokers, my preference is not to provide further comments, as I assume the factual evidence will guide these investigations and not my opinion. So I I'm going to refrain from talking more about that. I didn't hear anything today that would substantially change my opinion about the tests that Newsday conducted, I will say that much. I do want to reiterate what Newsday exposed is not peculiar to Long Island or to the real estate sales market, for that matter. Systemic racism infects segments of the housing market and is still much too pervasive. A few months ago, following the murder of George Floyd, Kareem Abdul-Jabbar wrote an op ed in the LA Times and included the following quote that I would like to end with as a parting thought for all of us to ponder, because it applies to housing as well. He said, quote, "Racism in America is like dust in the air. It seems invisible, even if you're choking on it, until you let the sun in. Then you see it's everywhere. As long as we keep shining that light, we have a chance of cleaning it wherever it lands. But we have to stay vigilant because it's always still in the air." Previously, I thanked Newsday for shining a bright light on the issue of housing discrimination. But I also want to extend my appreciation to your Senate committees for keeping the light on and for formulating legislative and policy responses to address this problem. Again, I'm here today. I'm happy to answer questions from committee members, and I again appreciate the opportunity to speak with you.
Thank you both, both for your testimony and your work on this issue. I'll start. And, you know, one of the recurring themes that we've heard from all of the brokers and agents are cries of fake news, basically, right? Where Newsday's investigation was flawed, was unfair, was, you know, complete, like whatever adjective you want to throw in there, I think we've heard them all today, and they all fall under this sort of this category that has existed for four years now of fake news. Your reaction to that? You both, no doubt, have taken a very close and hard look at the what Newsday produced. Can you speak to, in your professional opinions, the veracity of the Newsday investigation?
Well, I I would sort of echo Fred in that what I said in the fall, I I felt that the Newsday investigation was absolutely stellar. And they took great pains to be conservative in terms of trying to be sure that they had the same statements being made, that 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 the two testers were asking for the same thing, et cetera, et cetera. So I I don't find it credible at all, the comments that suggest that Newsday is the problem and and that the realtors are all innocent.
Do you and specifically something that we heard frequently was, well, that clip, that video clip, those comments were taken out of context. Do you think that there's anything to that response that we heard frequently from agents and brokers?
My recollection, my recollection is that the when Newsday broke the story back in November of 2019, they posted all of the videos on which they relied for their story in in their entirety. And I didn't listen to all of them, I will tell you that honestly, because it's a lot of hours of of recorded testing. But it was posted for all to see. I thought their transparency was remarkable in in that they weren't hiding anything. A lot of times in testing cases, I will tell you, defendants initially argue, well, it's what you're not showing us or what you're not telling us or what you can't hear on a particular recording that that they allege vindicates them in a situation. But Newsday, which was much more transparent here. And I think one of the reasons the study, the investigation, didn't receive a lot of criticism from the real estate industry was the fact that they were pretty forthcoming about what they found and and laid it on the table for everybody to see.
And I would add that the statements speak for themselves. I mean, and and, you know, all of you, all the senators, really pointed that out as well. So I don't understand that comment about it's something that wasn't said.
And to to that end, and to the end of what we're all talking about here, are you are you as stunned as I am that it seems, as far as we can tell from all the testimony from the brokers and CEOs and the written testimony, that it appears not a single real estate agent faced disciplinary action at the end of all this? Your reaction to that?
Well, I don't know that I can say I was stunned. I had hoped, I really had hoped, that there would have been action because it was so clear. As Fred said, they were Newsday was so transparent, there's no way you and and even, you know, sometimes you you said a comment, you said, is there any way that comment would not be considered discriminatory? And so I that there has been no action is is appalling. And I hope that the state will not appall us. And what I mean is, I hope that there will be action on the part of the New York State Division of Licensing Services, the Division of Human Rights. You know, that will stun me if there's no action by the by the enforcement agencies, if you will.
Do you have anything to add, Fred?
The only thing I would add is I think the the lack of action by the companies is not terribly surprising, only because many of them, as you saw, were lawyered up for even this hearing. They're facing investigations right now by various government agencies. So they're taking the position, I will say, at least somewhat understandably, that there's an explanation for for what they did and and so forth. Because if the companies actually disciplined them, then it would become obvious to the government government agencies investigating them that they did something wrong. And I think it's going to be obvious anyway, or should be obvious to to some of the investigations that are ongoing, that there were some acts here that were inappropriate under fair housing laws. But I don't, I'm not surprised by it. It is stunning, though, I agree with you.
Thank you both. Senator Kavanaugh, do you have anything?
Yes, I do, thank you. Fred, you're first of all, thank you both for testifying once again. It's very helpful to us. You're actually the only two witnesses that we've had back twice now, so we appreciate your time and your commitment to this and your expertise. Fred, your your organization works, you work, if I'm not mistaken, in New York City, in Duchess, and Nassau, and Orange, and Putnam, and Rockland, and Suffolk, and Westchester. Is that right?
That's pretty good, yes.
Okay, I tried that you they're hopefully alphabetized. So the so I just want to get a sense, like, obviously, we focused on Long Island because of these dramatic, very dramatic findings and very, very specific findings. Do you believe that the phenomena that we're seeing on Long Island through this investigation are widespread in other parts of the state, including other places where you're working?
I do. And I think it's not only widespread throughout the state, but I think you could go to any number of metropolitan areas in the nation and produce similar results. Some might be slightly worse, some might be slightly better, but you're going to see this. I mean, it's a it's a culture within the real estate industry that has not changed. And I might add, because I know a lot of your questions today or questions of the senators had to do with training and how do you make the changes and the fact you got these rather uninspired responses from some of the brokers. There are some real estate people out there in the country who are really thinking deeply about the issue of race and how it impacts their work in the industry. And they're trying to make changes in their own communities. And we're actually working with the National Association of Realtors to produce a video. We're interviewing those individuals to show that they actually live their fair housing values and and so forth in the work that they do. And I think we have to get more of those voices out front, where people are talking about, yes, you know, you can be asked about race or this, and this is how you should handle it. But maybe it's more than that, having people be accountable in the office for what they're doing or not doing in their real estate practices and holding them responsible for their actions. And I do think that that was noticeably absent today. And I think it's where the direction the industry has to go. And I think there's some movement in that direction, but I think we still have a long way to go.
Do you think the Newsday investigation and its reporting, it seems, if nothing else, certainly, these firms are looking at their practices, they're, as you noted, getting lawyers. In many cases, we had testimony that they, you know, they fired the previous testers, the trainers, they have new trainers now. Whether that's putting aside the question of whether that is sufficient in Long Island, do you think that other actors in the industry are in New York State, say, are responding to this, are changing practices at this point?
Well, I know we've trained the trainers for the New York State Association of Realtors, and we've gotten inquiries from other boards. And I think there's interest in providing more quality training and instruction on fair housing, perhaps some on implicit bias and some on the history. You know, a lot of people discussed, including your other experts, the need to talk about the effects of this discrimination and how it actually harms people and communities. And I think that's a very essential element of this training that that needs to happen. I'm not as much sold, I will tell you quite frankly, on the notion that all much of the discrimination that Newsday exposed is based on implicit bias. I think it's convenient to suggest that. I actually see a lot more intentional bias in some of the comments and statements that were made. But I'm not saying implicit bias doesn't exist or that it shouldn't be addressed in training. I'm merely saying I I think that the real estate industry plays that card a little too often as a way to suggest somehow that they're they're going to minimize the the prevalence of intentional racism in their rank and file. And I I think that's a mistake.
I agree that we certainly had some behavior that seemed quite overt that we tried to highlight today, that it did not seem implicit or or it certainly wasn't well coded, if it was intended to be coded. Elaine, can I ask you, just to follow up a little bit on something you said before? You talked about the positive effect that the legislation that we're considering today and, you know, our committees are considering. Talk about the positive effect that would have. But you also mentioned that you think sort of the next frontier on this is the question of local control of home rule. And can you talk a little bit more about the the relationship between decisions that localities make and and racial segregation?
Sure. So on Long Island, where we where we also have a multitude of localities, what happens is very, there's very little development that can happen as of right when you're talking about multifamily housing. And that's that's a big way to keep out affordable housing, because the most affordable housing is going to be multifamily, it's going to be less expensive, it's going to be apartments. And and we have seen at hearings where the residents make very clear, they're screaming and name calling and all kinds of things going on, that they don't want any of those people or things of that nature coming into the community. And the electeds, you know, I would say that there's a there's some spine missing. Or they are of the same mind of the residents. And so what happens is the developers are not able to make progress because the zoning is for single family. And 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 it's also for large lots. And so you you don't have you, it's it's hard to just get the multifamily. It's and then it's really hard to get enough density so that you can get enough affordability. So given that structural racism is so endemic, which means that people have been living in the soup of structural racism since its inception and since Long Island's inception with with Levittown, et cetera. And those notions, those ideas are not disappearing. And we saw it in the hearing today. I would say I would agree with Fred that the reason why people do what they do is because they have those prejudices and they haven't been checked. There's been, there really hasn't been the kind of enforcement that would say to them, you can't, I know that's the way you feel, but you can't get away with that. And they do get away with it, they have been getting away with it. So that's why it is so rampant. The most generous thing I can say about the the people in charge of the real estate agencies is they need to be in a different profession. I mean, they don't know, if they don't know what housing discrimination is, which is clearly kind of what they were dancing around, I didn't know, and and then I had to have more training or whatever. These are supposed to be the experts in in real estate. And and they showed flatly that the best you could say is that they don't know their job, and this is a part of their job. This is not some kind of add on. It's integral to them being able to do their job in the way they should. And and then the worst thing you could say, you know, is a lot of other things about how they are lying.
Thank you. Yeah, and thank you for, you know, for your review, your comments earlier on the legislation we're proposing today, but also for thinking longer term and bigger picture about what we can do. We did, we did the Housing Committee along with Valman at Montgomery, our great Senate colleague, who is sadly departing from the Senate in the next few months. We did do a joint roundtable on Long Island last year about the difficulty of producing affordable housing. I think some of my colleagues from Long Island were there as well. And, you know, especially the difficulty of producing multifamily housing. I will say also that this is a topic where we've heard directly from some of the builders on Long Island, that they would like to produce that kind of housing, which, as you note, might be more accessible to people. And they meet great obstacles. So, and I think that's a conversation to be continued. You mentioned your report on the Furman Center site. I think the Furman Center also has been doing some work on this. And I, I do think this is a topic that we will be talking about more as we go into the next session. But again, thank you both for your, all of your work, for your, for your leadership in this, in this world that we're in, and for your expertise today and always. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Before I turn it over to Senator Kruger, who I know has some questions, I do just want to acknowledge something that you said, Fred, and it was a good point. And that is that there does seem to be other stakeholders here, industry stakeholders, that are taking this more seriously than some of what we've heard today at the hearing, including the New York State Association of Realtors, who have indicated they would welcome more testing, who, as you pointed out, are taking their trainings now more seriously, who have been engaged and even supportive in many of the pieces of legislation that we are proposing. And so for anyone who is watching, I think that is an important point to reinforce. And that is that there are some industry stakeholders who have been very engaged on this issue and taking it a lot more seriously than what we've heard.
I think it's worth noting, I think it's worth noting that the Association of Realtors also testified at our previous hearing. They're not here today. They have, they have been on the record on this issue as well.
Senator Kruger?
Thank you so much. Again, I'm finding this hearing so educational and valuable. And I'm sorry I missed the first one. So when you were both, actually, several of my questions, my esteemed colleague Brian Kavanaugh just asked, so I really only have two left now. So I already know, but that's okay, Brian. You're in great minds think alike. You are the chair of this committee, damn it. So I'm not clear whether this did come up earlier, but are real estate agents asking people for their credit scores or other questions like that during their initial interview of where they're going to direct them? Because at least for people who live in the city of New York, who might be trying for rental apartments, not purchasing homes, that is one mechanism that is used to steer people away from certain kinds of housing. So the fact is, if you are low income or you were low income at some point, if you were a single mom at some point, if you were black or brown at some point, which pretty much follows you around your whole life, you may have had credit score problems. And is that used to sort of also discriminate against people before they even start to look for a house? Is that part of the story?
Well, I think I can possibly answer that. And part of what you have to recognize with the real estate industry is there's not just one way companies and agents work. They're all structured differently. I would say that where you have credit entering into the equation is to the extent you have agents, and you heard some today, who said, you have to be pre-approved for a loan before I'm going to take you out to see homes. Well, the credit score is going to enter into that equation. You know, there's such a thing as pre-qualification that a lender can do to give you a rough idea of how much housing you can afford. You don't have to have a credit check done to get a pre-qualification. A pre-approval, though, suggests you're pretty much ready, willing, and able to purchase that day, and they are going to do a credit check. Most lenders are going to do a credit check in order to qualify you. So if a real estate agent is saying, I won't take anyone out who's not pre-approved, it means, for instance, for a first-time homebuyer, you have to be ready to lock in a rate on a loan before you even looked at a home, which seems a little ridiculous to me. Most people want to search for a house for a while and get an idea of the market and what they can afford before they want to lock in a rate and have their credit checks done on their, on their background as well. So it comes into play, but I think in a more subtle fashion and in some of the ways that the Newsday investigation actually uncovered.
Because certainly it's my experience that for first-time homeowners and also for new Americans, it's more likely that they then might be going to their extended family and saying, hi, can you help me out with the down payment because I can't quite do it myself? And that's a perfectly acceptable and reasonable way to ensure that you might be able to afford that home. But if they're going to predetermine you before you ever get to even see houses in certain communities, it seems to me that that really is a problem. And, and is parallel to what we see in steering around in what you're allowed to rent or not rent in the city of New York. Because we all know on this hearing that discrimination takes place pretty much everywhere. God knows it's not unique to Long Island. We just had a Newsday expose there. So is there something we should be trying to do to prevent that from happening?
It's funny you should bring up renting in the city of New York because actually, one of the disturbing trends with some landlords is that you've got to submit a full application and have a credit check done before you are even able to see or know what's available by that landlord, which is ridiculous. I mean, I've been a renter all my life, and I could not imagine disclosing all of my personal identity information before I even see the unit that I'm going to be applying for. And yet that is increasingly becoming a problem. So there may be some policy or legislative solutions to that problem because I think that's pretty onerous for renters to have to, to submit all of their documentation in the private market before even knowing what apartments are available or knowing whether they can see the apartments. So that might be necessary. In the sales market, I think it's, it's a question of this pre-approval thing and whether there's some way to regulate that. I, you know, I noticed a lot of the agents in the Newsday thing did not, you know, their state rules and Division of Licensing has on just disposing to a prospective buyer, whether you're a buyer's agent, a seller's agent, or, or both. And my understanding is that didn't happen very much either, and that's an actual regulation. So, I mean, there's a lot of rules that get passed, but they don't get followed by, by real estate agents. And of course, fair housing laws are one, but there's others as well that are more consumer-related. So I think there, there may be some issues. I haven't thought deeply about that issue in the sales market, but I know in the rental market, it's a real serious problem.
May I add one clarification? Because there was some confusion, the nicest way to put it, concerning disparate treatment. And so just to state for the record, the problem that was identified with a number of these real estate agents was that they would say to one, one of the clients, the client of color, you have to have your, you know, your certification. And then to the white client, they wouldn't say that. And that seems very straightforward to me, but I did hear a lot of sort of confusion. They'd bring up a whole nother issue, rather than on its face, that's discrimination.
Thank you. I guess there was one other question. Try to be careful about how I put it. So there was at least one real estate agent who testified earlier, who said, because I am Latino and black, I couldn't possibly discriminate against someone in the job I do. And I had an immediate reflection back to my own life and childhood, where I happened to be Jewish, and my parents went to buy a house, and the Jewish real estate agent wouldn't show them houses in certain communities because they said Jews aren't welcome there. But my mother decided she didn't care because a town had the best school system in New Jersey, and she decided her kids could cope with antisemitism in exchange for a good educational system. So they bought a house on a bank auction because no one would show them a house in the town. And then when we moved there, all of our neighbors came with a petition, get out Jews. But it was actually Jewish real estate agents who were telling us, don't even try to live in that town. So I'm just wondering, are we past all that? Or yes, you can fall into these patterns, no matter who you are, if that's the message coming through from your industry. Would you agree?
I would absolutely agree.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. I think Senator Thomas has some questions.
I'll be quick with this. Thank you, Fred. Thank you, Elaine, for all the testimony that you've given so far to our experts in this. You probably heard the testimony of some of these brokers when I questioned them about their lack of supervision. I had one that I had asked whether it's, it's even possible to supervise 800-plus agents under his license, and he said yes. And he said it's easy. What are your thoughts on this? Either one?
Well, I have 13 staff, and I find that very difficult to supervise. My staff will appreciate my saying that, but I, but I think 800 is, it runs into the category of the absurd. The notion that you can provide the kind of, the level of supervision that's required to ensure that people are complying with the rules and laws and so forth would seem to me to be a monumental challenge for any supervisor. And, and they can develop a structure, as I saw with the one with the tiered managers and so forth, but that may, may not, may not be the best structure, actually, to ensure that people are complying with laws. Sorry, Elaine, I interrupted you.
No, that's fine. I certainly agree with you on the 800 being absurd. But I also would add that, again, it makes you wonder what the policy is for the, for the firm. Because, you know, if you're not really doing any supervision, and, you know, if people are discriminating the way they, the way they are, the way they were shown on the Newsday investigation, you would have no problem with that if that's the policy of the firm. So I, I think that there are underlying issues here, which are certainly disturbing, but it just affirms what appears to be a widespread problem. You know, this is not a few agents, agents in a firm. These are firms that have allowed this behavior to flourish.
Absolutely. I mean, you talked about the lack of enforcement from state agencies that has led to what we see right now. But I, I kind of feel like from all the testimony these brokers gave, just their, for them, profit is everything. So they close their eyes to certain issues, and that's why we are here. Trying to make things better because our constituents deserve a lot better than us. So thank you so much, both of you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Senator Thomas. Not seeing any other hands from colleagues, I believe that concludes this panel. I want to thank both of you again for coming back for a second time. I found it particularly helpful that, quite frankly, you were at the tail end and could respond to some of what we had heard earlier in this hearing. So I appreciate you waiting to testify now, and thank you very much for your insight. And we look forward to continuing to be in touch.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Now, at first blush, it may appear that we are at the end of our hearing and witness list. However, we are not quite done yet. As I had mentioned earlier in the hearing, I, our counsel was in State Supreme Court for a judge earlier this afternoon, seeking to compel the testimony today of Panel Five, which are four individuals from Realty Connect USA. They, they chose to ignore our subpoena. Despite our reaching out and continuing to reach out to their attorneys, they refused to comply. So we are awaiting court action. We believe that, that court action is forthcoming in the very near term, today. And so instead of adjourning and closing this hearing, we're actually going to go on a temporary recess so that we may see what action the court does come down with. And so with that, it's 3:52. We'll go on temporary recess until we have further word. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Senator Kruger.
Okay, good evening, everybody. I am joined back by my co-chairs, Senator Thomas and Senator Kavanaugh. I see there are a couple of colleagues still here as well. And we will be tentatively adjourning until next Friday. That is September 25th at 10:00 a.m. After going to court to enforce our subpoena that was issued to a number of individuals associated with Realty Connect USA, our counsel has reached agreement, or tentative agreement, I should say, with the individual's lawyer to have them appear before us tentatively next Wednesday, next Friday at 10:00 a.m. And so new public notice will go out. And until then, we bid you all farewell. I don't know if my co-chairs have any parting words.
No, it's been, it's been a long day. Just appreciate everybody out there who has been monitoring and watching today's proceedings and all the witnesses and my co-chairs and other colleagues who joined. But I'll save closing remarks for the, kind of the closing of our final, possibly our final event on this next Friday. But I thank, thank you, and thank you to my co-chairs in particular for, you know, all your work today.
I just want to echo the same thing. I will do my closing, actually, after round three on Friday next week. But just want to thank our co-chairs. I want to thank central staff and our hard-working counsel who went to court this morning to get this done. So thank you to all, and take it away, Senator Kruger.
Yeah, no, thanks. And I just want to echo again gratitude to central staff and the staff in each of our offices for doing a tremendous amount of the legwork leading up to today. I guess this is 2A. Hearing 2B is next Friday. We will all see you then. And I think, you know, look, what's transpired with this particular panel is testament to the fact that we in the State Senate majority are taking this issue extremely seriously. We believe that when we issue a subpoena, that is not something that folks can just sort of thumb their nose at. And, you know, we look forward to the testimony that we will, it seems, be receiving late next week. Thanks very much, and see you then.
Thanks, everybody.